Like to call to order the October 16, 2025, City of O'Fallon Annual Budget Meeting to Order. Roll call please, Bass.
Mayor Hennessy.
He's excused.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Cuskella.
He's excused.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
All right, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Wexler. Second.
Motion to approve by Taylor, seconded by Member Wexler. Questions or comments? All in favor, sign aye. Aye. All opposed? We have no old business, we'll move straight to new business, review of the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. Quick message for the audience and for the members alike, as we begin, let me remind everyone that tonight is a time for review and questions. Any changes such as additions or deletions to the 2026 proposed budget will be handled at the October 23 City Council Workshop. It has always been Mayor Hennessy's policy to require that any additional funds that you want to talk about spending are required to also show a corresponding decrease elsewhere in the budget. Just keep that in mind for the 23rd. Mike, you want to start us off?
Thank you, President Protim and Councilmembers. It's my pleasure to be before you this evening to introduce the budget discussions for 2026. As you know, the budget process is very important to our city for several reasons, not the least of which is the fact that this is the chance for staff to show the council and the citizens some of the accomplishments that have taken place in 2025 and how we plan to build on those accomplishments in the coming year. In addition, this process allows us to show that the proposed budget reflects the priorities of the City Council, our residents, and city staff as we move into another fiscal year together. As you will see, the proposed budget takes into consideration the established policies and procedures that govern the city's finances, including presenting and maintaining a balanced budget for the city. Consistent with prior years, I'm honored to present the preliminary overview of the 2026 budget. The City of O'Fallon staff has undertaken a thorough and deliberate process to develop a comprehensive financial plan that aligns with the city's strategic objectives, which addresses both current obligations and future needs. The preparation of the budget is a collaborative process that engages all departments, each contributing essential input to ensure the financial plan reflects the direction of the City Council, and most importantly, addresses the expectations of our community. This budget has been difficult to compile due to various outside factors impacting the city, including lower-than-expected sales tax revenues, a projected decrease in 2026 sales tax receipts due to the end of sales tax revenue on select products, as well as the potential of a property tax freeze as approved by the Missouri Legislature in 2025. It is my goal tonight to outline the city's financial strategy, principal priorities, and the opportunities identified for 2026. Throughout the development of this plan, we have remained firmly committed to the guiding principles of fiscal responsibility, accountability, and transparency. This budget incorporates significant capital investments aimed at meeting the city's needs and enhancing operational efficiency. Through this deliberate approach, we position O'Fallon for both near-term sustainability and long-term success, while strengthening our standing as one of the nation's most desirable communities in which to live, work, and play. Revenues for the 2026 budget total more than $136 million. These anticipated revenues include transfers and were calculated with a conservative consideration for the city's economic status. This is a decrease compared to the projected 2025 revenues of $190 million. The overall decrease in revenues is due to the fiscal year 2025 bond issuances for the Public Works Building and Fleet Facility and the Artificial Turf Installation Project. Since the Public Works Building and Fleet Facility split among eight different funds, each of the eight funds will reflect an overall decrease in revenues. The general fund revenues decreased by 1.1 million compared to 2025 because of the one-time insurance proceeds received for the March 2024 hailstorm. Property taxes and sales taxes are the city's largest revenue sources in the general fund. The 2026 budget includes a projected 3% increase in property tax revenue and a 1.5% increase in overall gross receipts. The city's sales tax projection in 2025 reflects a 2% decrease as compared to the 2024 actuals. Use tax revenues are projected to remain stable compared to the prior year. The current general property tax levy rate is .2817 cents, and the debt service tax levy rate is .1401 cents, which is an overall rate decrease from the 2024 rates. The reduction is due to growth in the city's assessed valuation. Overall interest income will be declining as rates decrease and as the bond project funds are spent. Recreation fund revenues, which are primarily sales tax and program fees, are expected to be $8.7 million. In keeping with past direction provided by the City Council, the recreation fund will receive 75% of the revenues from the shared parks and stormwater half-cent sales tax, and 25% will go to the stormwater fund. Revenues for other funds include the enterprise funds for sales and services, special revenue funds like sales tax, property tax, and various fees, and the debt service fund from property tax. The City of O'Fallon has established a longstanding tradition of conservative and responsible financial management, guided by the standards of the Government Finance Officers Association, the assessments of bond rating agencies, and the city's own fiscal policies. Consistent with this commitment and the objectives of the City Council, the general fund unreserved balance is projected to exceed 40% in 2026. This prudent financial strategy protects the city against temporary revenue shortfalls, economic fluctuations, disasters, and unforeseen major expenditures, while also providing flexibility to capitalize on emerging opportunities in the years ahead. As part of the city's ongoing commitment to provide affordable, comprehensive healthcare coverage for full-time employees, the proposed 2026 benefits plan reflects a balanced approach to maintaining quality coverage while managing costs. The upcoming planned year includes a modest increase in health and dental insurance premiums. To help offset this impact, the city will absorb a portion of the increase, ensuring employees continue to have access to robust coverage and a broad provider network. The structure of the medical and dental plans will remain largely consistent with the current year. Several enhancements have been made to the medical insurance plan that are expected to offer meaningful value to employees. These updates are designed to improve the plans in response to our employees' needs and provide overall support for employee well-being. Vision and ancillary benefit plans will remain unchanged, with no increases in employee premiums or modifications to coverage levels. One required design change is an IRS mandated adjustment to the deductible and out-of-pocket maximum for the qualified high deductible health plan. Thanks to the proactive planning of city staff and support of the City Council in previous years, staffing levels in all city departments align well with current city needs. As a result, there is no additional general fund staffing in 2026. As an aside, there were three positions requested we were not able to fill for this year. There are two full-time and one part-time staff additions from the Environmental Services Fund and two full-time staff from the Street and Road Improvement Fund. We will discuss those requests later in the meeting. This City Council continues to prioritize infrastructure, and the proposed budget reflects a significant commitment to that. In 2026, we are proposing more than $34.49 million in street and road projects, which is double the proposed amount in the 2025 budget. The budgeted amount includes over $28 million from the Street and Road Improvement Fund and $6.45 million from the Police and Road Improvement Use Tax Fund. These funds are proposed to address our continual street and road maintenance needs, with $4.95 million dedicated to concrete improvements, $810,000 allocated to asphalt repairs, $300,000 to fund the crack seal program. This budget, at the direction of the City Council, represents a sharp increase in road repair funds compared to the 2025 budget. There is an additional $1 million budget for the partial depth repair program. Other roadway projects include $6.1 million for the Deer Road Reconstruction, $5.7 million for Darden Greenway from Sports Park to Bluebird Park, $5.5 million for Hoff Road Phase II, and $5.1 million for West Terra Lane realignment. The city routinely requests funding from the St. Charles County Road Board, the Missouri Department of Transportation, and the federal government through various grant opportunities to supplement city funds. The projects are slated to receive approximately $13.78 million from our partner agencies in addition to our own funds. These opportunities become a force multiplier for our dollars and greatly enhances our ability to complete road projects. The Water Fund requests $35,000 in 2026 for capital projects. The Sewer Fund requests $4.1 million, which includes $2.4 million for sludge dewatering, $300,000 for lift station upgrades, $200,000 for sanitary sewer lining, and $675,000 for collection system projects. The proposed general fund budget includes numerous expenditures to address public safety, with nearly $20 million included in the public safety budget. The Police and Road Improvement Use Tax Fund also has $2.8 million for police operations, new equipment, and equipment replacement purchases. In 2026, approximately 30% of the expenses of the fund are for the police department, with $6.45 million going towards street and road improvement. We take pride in our ongoing national recognition as one of the best places to live in the United States and the best place to live in Missouri, according to U.S. News &amp; World Report earlier this year. As recently as this week, O'Fallon was named as the number four best small city by Smart Asset. As a regional leader, the City of O'Fallon remains committed to sustaining this position for future generations, and we accomplish this through innovation, collaboration, and a shared commitment to excellence. Our upcoming Real-Time Information Center represents a significant step forward in enhancing public safety. This advanced system will allow our first responders to access and share information in real time, helping to keep our streets and neighborhoods safer for everyone. Even prior to this system being live, we've already worked with and committed our efforts to our local schools that the police department serves. In partnership with the City of St. Charles, the Center for Advanced Skills Training in Law Enforcement will provide state-of-the-art training and professional development for officers throughout the region, state, and nation. This collaboration strengthens not only our own police department, but also all officers that set foot onto the training complex. We're also proud to have partnered with the City of St. Peters to reintroduce single-stream recycling for our trash customers. This joint effort makes recycling more accessible and efficient while reinforcing our shared commitment to environmental sustainability. O'Fallon continues to serve a vital role in supporting regional operations. Our Water and Sewer Divisions provide reliable, high-quality service to residents both within and beyond our city limits. Our Municipal Court delivers services for the cities of Weldon Spring and Lake St. Louis, ensuring fair and efficient judicial processes. Additionally, our police dispatch serves the communities of Cottleville and the St. Charles County Community College, providing both dispatch and jail services that contribute to a coordinated and effective public safety network. All of these efforts underscore O'Fallon's ongoing commitment to regional leadership. Through strong partnerships, rather, strategic collaboration, and a focus on service excellence, we continue to enhance the quality of life for our residents and strengthen the region we proudly call home. We could not accomplish these efforts without the hard work and the dedication of the best staff in the state and without the continued support of this City Council. Through these collaborative efforts, we present the 2026 budget, which prioritizes public safety, supports economic development, and advances the city's infrastructure. In conclusion, I extend my gratitude to Assistant City Administrator Lenore Tozeraldez, Deputy City Administrator Tom Drabell, Finance Director Vicki Boschert, Finance Analyst Kelly Perano, and all department heads for their expertise and thoughtful attention to the city's priorities throughout the preparation of this budget. And with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Vicki Boschert for the next part of the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Anyone have any questions for Mike before we move on? All right, real quickly, I'd like to point out that there are 41 items on the agenda. After the 20th item, or about halfway through, we'll take a 10-minute break. So if anyone needs a nature break, if you can make it to that far, then great. Just want to let everybody know. Vicki, you have the floor.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the fee schedule and the utility donation program. If you go to the section of the fee schedule, anything that's highlighted in blue is a change of the fees. Staff has evaluated the fees and incorporated any fee increases into the current budgets. And I also wanted to point out that the utility donation program, those funds currently go to Meals on Wheels program, and that's what's continued to be recommended for next year, unless there is a change at the next meeting. Does anybody have any questions on the fee schedules? If not, I'm going to proceed to the major revenue sources. The first one is property taxes. Property taxes is a stable revenue source for the city and has done very well. There is a concern about Senate Bill 3 and how that may impact our property taxes over the next few years, so that's something that we are keeping a close eye on. The next revenue source is sales tax. Sales taxes also has a pretty big impact to our general fund. It hits our Street and Road Improvement Fund, our Recreation Fund, and our Stormwater Sales Tax Fund. Sales tax is fairly volatile. It's based on economic conditions. This past year, at one point throughout the year, we were down about 6% year-over-year in sales tax, and now we're down about 3.7%, so it's come back a little bit. It is something of a concern, and it made it a little bit challenging to balance the 2026 budget based on what we're seeing in our sales tax collections. And then use tax is still a fairly new tax. It's been really positive for the city. When it was approved, our voters approved for it to go to police and streets, so that's how we budget that tax, and it's been coming in very well. That is primarily collected through manufacturing and businesses that make out-of-state purchases. It's also for residents that are purchasing from companies out of state. So that's where we get a majority of that from. You can't necessarily follow the trend information with it, because you may have some manufacturers make larger purchases some years, but it has been coming in pretty consistently, so we've been very happy with that, because it's more predictable that way. And next, we have gross receipts taxes for gas and electric, and this is the 5% tax that goes on gas and electric. It goes to help fund the general fund. That also is pretty consistent and a good revenue source for the city. The next one is gross receipts tax for telephones. Over time, those taxes have degraded. The municipalities and governments have been in several legal settlements with some of the cellphone companies based on the way that they're applying the 5% gross receipt, and I know that there are attorneys that continue to look at that, because it shouldn't be going down as much as it is, but it does continue to go down. So that's something that I try to keep an eye on, but I know that we do have some attorneys that also keep an eye on what is going on with these cellphone bills. And next is the franchise fees for video services. In 2021, the Senate passed Bill 163 that started to reduce these revenues for us. Originally, it was 5%, and it goes down a half of a percent. So in 2023, it went down to 4.5%, 2022 to 4.0. So in 2026, we're down to 3% of what we were able to collect, and it'll continue to go down until 2028 when we're at 2.5%. So this revenue source has continued to decline, so it's not something we can really depend on as much. If you look in 2017, we collected about $827,000, and now we're down to $292,000. So that's something that, you know, we've continued to look for replacement revenue sources for us to continue to be able to fund our services out of the general fund. Next is the building permits for both residential and commercial, and as you can see, that continues to do very well. We have a lot of economic activity in the city, which is really good to see the city continue to grow. And then we have court fines, and court fines has a positive trend for collections. It doesn't increase a lot. It has continued to be very predictable with this trend. I don't have any concerns over that. And state motor fuel taxes. State motor fuel tax is collected through vehicle fee increases, through gasoline tax, and I think there's a third tax that's collected. It's based on census population, so every 10 years when we have a new census, this tax gets changed. It's based on our census compared to the census of the state as a whole, so it has continued to go up. In addition, Senate Bill 262 in 2021, they've increased this by 2.5 cents up through 2025. So October 1 of this year was the last increase of that 2.5 cent, so we've continued to see it increase over the last several years. It'll probably start to level out the next few years just because that we won't get that additional bump every year. But this goes straight into the Street and Road Improvement Fund. And then the last one is our county road and bridge property tax. So this is a property tax that's collected by the county. It's also based on population, and they redistribute it to the municipalities every year, and this money also goes into our Street and Road Improvement Fund. Are there any questions on the major revenue sources?
Counselmember Kewen. The use tax goes to police and streets. Is it a 50-50 split, or no?
We have historically done a 50-50 split, but it's dependent upon council wishes. I think this year, we probably have a little bit more going to streets, because there was a request to increase the funding to the streets.
Yeah, my recollection is when we passed it, we didn't define that it would be divided a certain percentage. We just said it has to go to one or both of those two sources, correct?
Correct.
So, but so far, it's been 50-50. Mike?
This year, because of council request to do more for our streets, for 2026, it's a 70-30 split, where the police department is spending 30% of the funds and street and road improvement are 70% of the funds. Up to that point, it had been about a 50-50 split every year.
Right. Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Vicki. Still you.
Okay, general fund summary. Just to give you an idea, on the summary page, if you look in the lower right corner, it shows that we have a 55% fund balance reserve. So I just wanted to point that out, because our policy requires a 40% fund balance reserve. We obviously use those monies for flexibility for different projects that we've identified. So we do have a healthy fund balance reserve in case there's an emergency situation. So going to revenues, I just went over most of the major revenue sources on this page, so I'm going to open it up to any questions. If you have any questions about any of the other revenues you'd like me to discuss.
Anyone got any questions? Okay, I think you're good. Carry on.
And then the next is going to be employee benefits.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Moves us to employee benefits. Ms. Tanya Davies?
This will actually include salary administration as well as employee benefits, so I'm going to start with the compensation study. So, good evening, members of City Council. As I present the results of the 2025 compensation study, both to you all and to all city employees, I want to acknowledge our staff who provided valuable input, and to our consultant Higbee Associates, who assisted in creating the salary administration plan presented this evening. During this compensation study, we made sure that we held on to two important pillars. One, the city's continued commitment to our employees by staying competitive in the labor market, and two, the need to be fiscally responsible in light of potential revenue challenges in the coming year, as Mike has previously noted. So going back real briefly, back to 2022, when we did our last pay study, we were significantly behind market pay levels. Part of that had been we weren't doing pay studies as frequently as we maybe could have been. So to address that, back then, we implemented larger, more aggressive adjustments as part of a necessary catch-up effort. Those changes were impactful and helped us regain our footing, ensuring we were competitive in the marketplace and fair. Now, in 2025, we're in a different phase. The study shows that because of the continued evaluation and payroll adjustments we've made each year, we've made meaningful progress, and we're transitioning from catch-up to maintenance and refinement. This year's plan is more targeted, more sustainable, and designed to preserve the progress we've made while being mindful of the financial forecast. While making the necessary adjustments based on the marketplace needs, some compression adjustments and merit increases are more modest than in past cycles, indicating our catch-up efforts were fair, appropriate, and timely. We understand the compensation is personal and deeply important to each and every of our employees. This plan reflects our ongoing commitment to fairness, transparency, and long-term stability, and to recognizing the outstanding contributions of our staff. So, I talked briefly about this, but I'll talk a little bit briefly about going back to 2021, which many of our employees will remember. We tried to do a pay study, and unfortunately, based upon some issues with consultants, we weren't able to ever implement that pay study, which caused us to fall a little bit further behind, which is why in 2022, when we hired Higbee, we had found that we had fallen behind on many of our pay scales. We made more drastic changes at that time to stay competitive, and since then, we have been making adjustments as necessary to be as strong as we can and stay as competitive in the market as possible. That included looking at our pay schedules every year, as well as if there were hot-button positions that maybe we needed to upgrade more than once every three years, we would take a look at that and make those recommendations as well. So obviously, we've completed the 2025 pay scale, pay study. The next study is scheduled for 2028 with the 2029 implementation date. So we've made a conscious decision to do a pay study every three years to stay fair, and in between those times, we're going to keep our plan evergreen and make sure we're still looking at how we sit in the marketplace. So, in working with Higbee, the goal of our compensation study was to perform the market salary study, determine competitive salary levels for all positions with our selected comparators, and I'll go through those comparators in a minute here, make any recommended or recommend changes to the present salary structure, and Higbee also helped us to provide a methodology for keeping the system evergreen. Higbee was tasked with preparing a final report to the city, which detailed the process, results, and all of the recommendations. One item I failed to mention at the very beginning is typically, we do include the wage schedules in with the budget binder. We were literally working on those until about two hours ago, so I did put one at each of your places up there. So Higbee's deliverables to us was, again, to do a competitive review of the compensation to all of our comparators, make the recommendations needed to stay competitive, and minimize compression within our current staff, and do a report summarizing the data collected as an aggregate. So moving on to the process review, I will skip forward and show you those real quick. These are the comparators that we used. These are exactly the same as last year, other than Clayton. We added Clayton primarily for the recreation department. We had found in years prior, we were not doing a great job of finding recreation departments that were structured similar to ours, so we did add Clayton. We also attempted to gain information from MSD, but unfortunately, we don't always have the best of luck, and they don't have a ton of positions that match ours. So going back to this page, Higbee's also requested job description and pay classifications from all comparators. I think what's important to note here is when Higbee goes through and does this study, they don't look at job titles. They look at the content of the job. Titles can vary across cities. Not every, you know, HR director at one place is very different from an HR director at another city. So she looks at the actual content of the job and matches those up. They also look at, obviously, the market data, comparing our range assignments, and determine the best model, along with the cost of implementation based upon what the city can afford. Higbee met with all of the department heads, because another piece of this is to ensure... Higbee met with all of the department heads, because another piece of this is to ensure internal equity within the departments, and making sure the department manager has the ability to say, yeah, I think this position should be a little bit higher than that position, and this is where it should fall within our structure, and that's important to the city as well as Higbee when going through this. They prepared a gap analysis and refinement between the market and internal equity. They did multiple cost models for us, utilizing both step and range structures, and I should clarify, step was primarily looked at for public safety departments, that's what the public safety is currently on. Range structures was looked at across the city for the, what we consider our core employees as well as our public safety. All right, so we've talked about our comparators. I think I already mentioned this, but the only piece of this is environmental services is another area in which we really don't have many, many of our comparators that we use for other positions, don't have environmental services. We do have to look outside of our normal comparators to find those positions, and that's consistent with what we've done in the past. So Higbee matched our comparator job descriptions based on content, skill, and scope. They looked at 194 positions. They received updated ranges from all of our comparators at the time of the survey, and I think what's important to note here, too, is this was primarily done in July, August. As many of you know, our comparators are doing a pay study at probably about the same time even after us. So, once we publish results, their results could have already changed, but, you know, it's a constant chasing our tails, I think, with some of our comparator cities to try and stay ahead of the game. So, based upon the 2025 survey, one of the things we found in public safety is our current police officer range was 6.4% below the highest comparator minimum. Sergeant pay ranges were 10.7% below the highest comparator minimum, which is pretty significant. Higbee did prepare multiple cost models for us. They looked at traditional ranges, step ranges, looked at highest comparator minimums, a stacking approach, which sometimes we refer to as a linear approach, to make sure that a police officer can't make more than a sergeant, a sergeant can't make more than lieutenant, that sort of thing. We also looked at separate pay structures from other public safety positions, and we looked at the 75th percentile for those positions. Which last pay study, the 75th percentile is where we landed on for core employees, and some of our police department positions were placed at the highest comparator minimum. Switching over to our core employees, our data showed that 97.7% of our classifications had market matches. 87% of the OFALM position range minimums were below the 75th percentile, which showed we needed to make some adjustments to get us to where we needed to be. Found that majority of our comparators are on traditional ranges, not on steps for core employees, which has been a change in municipal government. 69 employees were below minimums after the range structures were updated. We also looked at a couple different models for core employees that, so we had a number of, we had lieutenants, captains, major, and chief that were on the core employee schedule, and they were not on the public safety. So we looked at whether or not we needed to keep it that way or move them to a separate pay structure, and we decided it made sense to move lieutenants and above to a separate pay structure, which is still on an open range, but they're outside of the core employee group. We kept those at the 75th percentile minimums. Again, met with department directors to review titles, pay, and structure placement. So to move into the best practice priorities for implementation, the first goal, and this has always been the goal of the city, is obviously, if we have new minimums, we can't pay employees below what the new minimum for the ranges, so we needed to make sure that any employee below the new minimum was brought up to the new minimum. We also looked at compression, which is important as well. So we looked at incumbents and roles where individuals were receiving below minimum adjustments. So if they, we had multiple incumbents in a role, and there were also people in that same role that were below the minimum, we looked at providing compression for those folks. We also tried to make sure that there weren't any situations where there were compression between a supervisor and subordinate, and we are suggesting compression adjustments made upon time and position up to a maximum of five years. Higbee also did some, just to mention some of the work that they did, because they did do a lot of work to give us the best possible outcome. For core employees, they created seven models with three rounds of modeling. Public safety, same thing. Public safety in the higher roles, the lieutenants and above, they created three different models for us to review and consider. Higbee also looked at some of our best, some of our procedures and policies, and made some recommendations to stay in line with how we should be administering our plan. We already do some of these. Promotions is one that we already have in place. When a employee accepts a new position, they do get a pay raise based upon the higher grade that they're going to. We've also indicated that a change in market value for substantially the same duties doesn't constitute a promotion. Demotions, we've obviously had to do demotions, sometimes voluntary, sometimes involuntary, and we didn't really have a good structure in place as to how to handle that compensation, which they've made some suggestions for us to implement. They've made it clear, and we've kind of always done this, too, for merit pay increases, if someone's on a performance improvement plan, they're not eligible for an increase. So to talk more about the public safety plan, the model that we're looking to implement would be utilizing open traditional ranges for all positions within the police department. So the ones that are listed up there for your review are currently on a step program. So the plan would be to move them to an open range when we implement this in January. We would be looking to make adjustments to the minimums based upon new open range structure, so again, anybody below the minimum of the new range would go to the new minimum. We also looked at compression, making sure that we make calculations based upon the tenure. So anybody who is in a position where there are multiple incumbents, there's someone below the minimum, they will receive a compression adjustment based on years of service, which in this case is a 1% adjustment a year, up to five years, with a maximum compression amount of $1,500. And to add to that, it's not listed up there, but anybody who's, we're looking at 1-1-2026 is the implementation date. Anybody, well, actually, I'm addressing it on the next page, so I'll just skip to that. You have to have at least one year in the position in order to receive a compression adjustment. So same thing in core employee, what we're recommending is adjustments to the minimum. The compression adjustment will be raised, based on the range minimum, time and position as of January 1st, 2026. The compression will be calculated based on tenure in the position with a maximum amount of $1,500. So our ask of the City Council this year is based upon the recommendations, and what is fiscally responsible for the city is to look at making compression adjustments only to those classifications that have multiple incumbents and roles in which individuals are receiving below minimum adjustments. In past years, we've looked at where our wage schedule needs to move to, and in this case, they're recommending a 3% wage schedule increase, which does not directly increase incumbent pay. That is a matter of moving the ranges up 3%. The recommendation is to move forward with a 2.5% merit increase for all eligible staff, and by eligible staff, it means they have to have a successful performance evaluation. And if we have anyone who's topped out, in the past, the council has agreed to lump sum, lump sum stipend for anyone who is at the maximum levels. And it's half of, well, Vicki's probably better at explaining this, I seem to always say it wrong, but it's half of the recommended pay increase, and there's a asterisk to that, as long as they get at least their minimum. Questions?
Well, I should point out real quickly that these raises are included in the budget that's sitting before you, so it's not, Tanya's not saying that we're going to do this in addition to what's already budgeted. It's already budgeted, correct? Anyone have any questions for Tanya? Okay, you're still up.
My assistant is going to get this up and running for me here. All right, so I'm actually starting with employee benefits. Mike alluded to some of this earlier. For those of you who are newer to the City Council, just to make you aware, we are a self-insured employer for our medical benefits. Brief history, last year, we only yielded 1% increase in medical, we did have a pretty high increase in our dental, and a 3% increase in vision, and the past three years prior to that, we were lucky enough to not have to increase medical rates at all for our employees. To give you an idea of what our plan structures look like, we do offer three different medical plans, Plan-Based PPO, which we call Plan 1, Plan 2, and then our High Deductible Plan. The structure of these plans is pretty much the same as they were, other than, as Mike alluded to, the IRS did regulate an increase in the individual and family deductibles for the eight, the High Deductible Plan. It was in previous, previous 2025, currently, it's at $3,300 for an individual and $6,600 for a family, for both the deductible and the out-of-pocket max, and we did have to increase those. What we are recommending is a, it's between a, well, 5% and a 6%, or 5.8% and a 5.96% increase in rates for employees. Mike mentioned as well, no major plan design changes, other than some enhancements to our plans. So the increase is listed, as you can see up there, a 5.08 rate, percent increase sounds a little bit worse than it actually is. Employees, I understand that's still more money out of their pocket, but the city is absorbing a portion of this, and I'll show you the actual cost to the city versus the employee when we get near the end here. Dental insurance will remain, oh, and I should mention, medical, we are remaining with our current provider, which is United Healthcare. Dental insurance will stay with Delta Dental, and we had to renew it a 7.34% increase. No changes in vision and ancillary, as Mike mentioned. So this is what our annual increases would look like to both the city and to the employee. So in medical, it's a $38,000 increase to the employee, and the city would be picking up $319,000 of that increase. In dental, it's an $8,500 increase to employees, and $25,800 increase to the city.
Tanya, can I interrupt? That $38,000 is not to a single employee, that's the aggregate to all employees. I don't want there to be any confusion.
And that's all I have. Do you have any questions on benefits? Otherwise, I'll move on.
Any questions?
Quick question. For the HSA, does the city match any of the funds that the employee puts in, or, so if they've got a health savings account, employees can put into that health savings account, but does the city match anything at all?
We put in $50 a month for the employee.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? All right, moving on to Human Resources.
Okay, so I will start with some accomplishments. So first of all, we did complete the compensation study. We are working through the implementation of an HRIS system to provide more efficiency and enhance customer service to our employees. We're about halfway through some of the implementation steps, but expect to have the HR piece and most of the benefits piece implemented by the end of the year. We've had some pretty significant updates to our wellness program, and I'm going to steal the chief's thunder here, in that we did hire our mental wellness coordinator that reports indirectly to myself and to Chief Menini, and from all reports I've heard, she's working out wonderfully and is providing a valuable resource to the department. We also rolled out United Healthcare Rewards this year to provide additional benefits to our staff. We also successfully hired our first HR intern. She does a great job of managing our social media. That is definitely something I don't get into as much as maybe I should, but to me, it's a, she's doing a great job with that. She's created our HR jobs page, where she posts all of our open positions, and if you don't follow it, please go on and follow her, trying to up our number of followers. We've also started looking at ways we can utilize AI, of course, staying in compliance policy and best practices in all of our recruitment campaigns. We do have a benefits fair every year, and this year, we've expanded that to include training. We're having all-day training for staff, as well as benefits providers, benefits presentations, and vendors onsite for November 3rd. I can't say it's an accomplishment, so I'm going to say it will be a success, and it will be an accomplishment in 2025. We have high hopes for it. Our goals in 2026, we are modeling this kind of off, well, not kind of, we are modeling it off the police department, where we heard throughout the year that employees in the police department who have a milestone anniversary are given a challenge coin, so they were kind enough to lend us that information, and we'd like to expand that to all of our employees. We also plan to continue our level of knowledge through certification programs and continuous learning efforts. I've mentioned the HRIS model, modules. We are focusing a recruitment program in which we will be attending four to six job fairs in 2026, focusing on the key areas in which we need assistance. This past year, we've gone to, in conjunction with engineering, went to two different engineering job fairs, and plan to obviously expand that and continue it as needed. We also plan to work on a interview guide program, which is really just to make sure we've got consistent interview guides that are measuring and counting on what the manager needs in the position, not just good questions to ask, focusing in on what you're looking for in the candidates, and making sure our questions are asking those, those questions and getting those responses from those candidates. So going through our budget, I wanted to go through some highlights. If you look at our bottom line, it looks like we're slashing our budget hugely. So we're really not, but I thought I would point out that it does look good on paper, and they've already mentioned the hailstorm repairs. We did have a significant hailstorm back in 2024. It's recommend, it's hitting our budget, but we really didn't slash our budget that much. We have decreased the contract services due to the compensation study taking place in 2025. Obviously, we won't need to budget for that again until 2028. Within our wellness program, I mention this every year, it does look as though we have taken a decrease, that's not actually the case, because we had to move some funds from 2024 to 2025. Additionally, with the $32,250, we've proposed $25,000 of that is reimbursed through United Healthcare. So really, the budget we're asking the city for is $7,250. We saw a big decrease in the safety equipment, because we purchased some AEDs last year that we don't need this again this year. We did increase our employment testing category, because we have decided that we will, HR, will take over the budgeting and coding of invoices, paying of invoices for police department pre-employment testing. For some reason, that was in the police department, and it makes more sense, I think, for HR to handle medical testing, invoices, psych testing, that sort of thing. And then I mentioned already, we're focusing our recruitment strategy, so I did have to increase our budget there a bit to be able to afford some of the job fairs and recruitment giveaways that we need at those events. Small equipment had an increase. We do keep all of our employee files and fire safe cabinets in the basement, our past employees, I should say, and we are running out of room, so we really have no choice but to purchase two new cabinets for that purpose. Any questions on Human Resources?
Councilmember Taylor?
I was just curious, how much was the compensation study?
It was $70,000, and I'm 99% sure that's correct, but I'll double-check that, and if I'm wrong, I'll let you know.
Any other questions for Tanya?
Yeah, quickly. Go ahead. Do we calculate a vacancy factor in our budget of, because we're not always going to be full of employees, there's always a hole.
The only division I do that for is the police department.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other questions? All right, Tanya, I think you're still up.
I am. Moving on to Volunteer Services. Kathy prepared this, I thought it was cute. So Volunteer Services came into fruition in October of 2000. Their goal is to promote enhanced city services through city engagement, and they do an excellent job. They're a wonderful staff. As you may know, some of you attended the event in, on October 3rd, celebrating 25 years of community impact, our Silver Jubilee. Kathy's highlighted some of the numbers there of the hours of service, the value of the service, et cetera. They really do an amazing job for our city. They really do an amazing job for our city. So I'm going to read through, no, I'm not going to read through all of these. These are the ongoing programs that boards, committees, department positions, and events that the volunteer service division has supported for the city. Again, they do an excellent job. You see them out and about every day and may not even realize some of these folks are volunteering for us. We couldn't do it without them. Volunteers assisted with ongoing programs, boards, committees, department positions, and event support for 22 of Fallon divisions, and they are listed there. We had internal partners where we've had help out in HR from some of our volunteers. At the police department, we have regular volunteers. The veterans office is staffed by volunteers. There have been 2,210 volunteer positions filled, service hours of 10,405. The cleanup of Sage Chapel Cemetery, which is a historic site in the city of O'Fallon, if you're not aware, and in the National Registry, resulted in the removal of more than 10 yards of brush limbs, weeds, and piles of debris from the property. Volunteers helped with planting over $4,500, or, I'm stuck on budget here, 4,500 flowers at city facilities. Over 1,300 pounds of trash was removed from One Creek site due to Mission Clean Stream. The remembrance walk had 142 residents, students, and staff participate, and we had a bunch of the kids from Assumption come over. As one of them told me in years past, "It's better than math class." So we love when they come over. Volunteer Services welcomed 13 new community partners as well. One of their goals, well, here's their goals, and then one of the goals of Volunteer Services correlates with one of the budget items I'll talk about, and it involves the ADA-compliant volunteer management database. The goal, by implementing this database, is to improve recruitment, onboarding, and communication using new technologies. It's a centralized hub structure to promote various city programs and resources. Our current VolGistics that they use currently is not ADA-compliant, and as you may know, we do have to make sure all of our websites are ADA-compliant. They also plan to expand participation of community partners and outreach programs that's working through CAPS. Volunteer Services had one intern work with them through the CAPS program last year, and we're hoping to expand that to other departments this year. Also, we'd like to standardize processes to increase efficiency and accountability. The goal has been to update the volunteer handbook to match what's in the employee handbook, make sure our position descriptions are up to date, and our policies are up to date. Implement strategic staffing approaches. Kathy is big on trying to help staff. We're constantly asking staff, "Do you have any positions? Do you need any help that volunteers can help with? If you're short-staffed," you know, we have to be careful to make sure we're not having a volunteer do staff work, but there is work that volunteers can do to help out the city, and they do a great job at that. Budget highlights, so I mentioned the volunteer management program, which is reflected in the technology systems line item. The new program would be called Get Connected by Galaxy Digital. We really have no choice but to move to this in talking with VolGistics. They don't have a plan, they weren't even aware of the governmental requirements or the DOJ's requirements to update the ADA requirements, so we really have no choice but to move to Get Connected. I mean, there's another vendor out there, but Get Connected is the one we feel would be the best fit for us. The program, it has program boxes to promote volunteer opportunities. I know one of the goals of the city has been to look at, or city council has been to look at more opportunities to help out the seniors, and we can have a box that focuses in on senior efforts. We can have a box for recruitment for office support, and we really think that'll help compartmentalize the various interests and drive more volunteers to our site. The annual fee is a bit more, and the 2026 budget does include a one-time setup fee. We did increase overtime to $3,500 due to wage increases and reclassification of staff. You might hear this a couple times between Volunteer Services and Recreation. We did have a couple positions that we had classified as exempt, and Higbee has recommended that based upon their job duties, they should be non-exempt. So these positions, the two volunteer coordinators within Volunteer Services will move to non-exempt. The phone and small equipment show a large decrease due to the fact that we had to purchase new phones and a shredder back in 2025 that obviously we don't need to repurchase in And that's all for Volunteer Services, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Tanya? Councilmember Ragsdale.
Thank you. It's a small dollar amount, so I'm not worried about that, but anytime I see a huge percent change, 245% increase for technology systems, do you know what that would be?
Yep, that's really the cost of moving to the new program. Let me flip to my notes here. So the new program, it does include that one-time setup fee. Sorry, I'm finding my line item. Yes, so the new, so VolGistics was $2,000 cheaper, and the new program will be $2,000 more expensive. It did include the one-time setup fee that we needed to budget for this year. And a little bit more in background checks.
Okay, thank you very much.
To budget for, sure.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, it is a small dollar amount, but their budget's pretty small as it is, but it does look a lot worse.
Any other questions for Tanya? All right, thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Patrick, I believe you're up.
Appreciate this opportunity to be with you. As always, we are a small team in economic development, but we are out there every day working on your behalf, and so wanted to hit a few budget, or highlights for you for our year and talk a little bit about our budget. So here are some of our examples of our successes so far this year. One of the big ones was the Aldi warehouse project, as you may remember. I think we kicked that project off in 2020, and it was originally about a $50 million investment. Ultimately, through your support, we approved a Chapter 100 bond project there for a $100 million investment. So that project grew significantly, and not only did we get additional jobs and capital investment in the city, but Aldi made the decision to address the stacking of trucks late at night and going to be able to resolve that issue, and ultimately, I believe they are going to go to 24/7 operations, so there shouldn't be any stacking at all in the future. You also see a number of other projects on that list of ones that we, a small group of ones that we have been involved with and help support in many different ways, whether it's finding them a new location, helping them walk through the process of getting a location up and running here in the city of O'Fallon, or even helping attract them to our city through our marketing and recruitment efforts. And we are on our path towards our 400 each-year business retention calls. Patty Brown on our team does an amazing job out there every day, almost calling on businesses, meeting with small businesses on our behalf, and letting them know that we care about them and what they do, and how can we help them be successful. And so you kind of see the other successes there. We have had a little kind of run of business closings this year. As you probably all well know, the economy's been a little bit of a struggle between interest rates, tariffs, trying to find labor. It's, our businesses are facing a lot of challenges right now, and so this is, but ultimately, we believe that we will have, as we usually do, more net openings than we have closings. And again, we're out there on social media and really pushing our message and our brand In terms of goals for this coming year, we believe that the time is right to continue to push our downtown development and working closely with OCVB to promote greater rail district activity. Sports tourism is extremely important right now in terms of the number of projects we're involved with, both from the sports complex on Bryan Road to the turfing of the Ozzy Smith Fields, and then we have three or four other kind of sports-related projects that they're working on here in the city, and so we think that is an important next wave in terms of economic activity here in our community, which should lead to more hotel activity. We, after almost eight years here at the city, never had a serious hotel project, and we have actually four hotel projects slated for O'Fallon, and so we want to take full advantage of that. And finally, I put this on here, a Northside Grocery Store, the time is right. After all this, we are so close, we have, there's been interest in the city from a number of different parties supposedly representing grocery stores. We think we have opportunity to get maybe one or two more grocery stores here in the city in the near future, and we hope to put that, one of those on the Northside. And in terms of challenges for us, I love the word dearth, dearth of vacant industrial parcels, we have one remaining industrial parcel that is 120 acres, and we actually have a contract on a portion of that parcel. And so ultimately, that will leave us, if that project does go through, with no industrial open vacant land, more than 20 acres. And that's, we just lose out on opportunities, and lose out on opportunities to attract industrial, lose out on opportunities to grow our industrial. And so that's going to be a real change, because we've been a very strong, mixed, balanced economy here with a strong industrial sector, and so we're going to have to work very hard on retention from that point forward. And then we have continued weak demand in large office space. We have 126,000 square feet still available in the city mortgage building, and then 5555 Wing Haven is going to be coming open at the end of the year as one of our office operations consolidates into another building. So we need to continue to try to push office opportunities. And just a quick visual for you, some of the things that are going on in the lower corner there, the site plan drawing is the Aldi site. Harbor Freight was a great success. As you know, they're going to be co-located with the new Rosalitas. If you've been by there and seen all the steelwork they're doing on the outside in terms of patio space and a portico, I think it's going to be an exciting project. The Apache Village Building, that's a few weeks old right there. It's a beautiful-looking building, if you've been by there on Drennan, and then a quick shot of the QuickTrip site, and one that we've gotten so much positive play on, Joy is Deli. They have been a great spokesman for our community. The receptivity was tremendous, and they called us "The Land of Milken Honey," and I just, I think that's our new brand. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Patrick? No. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you. I just had a question about, oh, I guess we actually haven't gone through the budget yet, however, I just had a question about the Hawthorne Foundation that we're a part of. Can you tell me what that is?
Sure. The Hawthorne Foundation was started now 30-plus years ago. Governor Bond originally started the Hawthorne Foundation as a private sector group to support the state's economic development efforts. And so this is a group that is, members are, include large employers, industries, you know, individuals who support economic growth in the state of Missouri, and so they go out and they promote Missouri, and they actually are the primary funder of Missouri Partnership, which is the independent arm of the state that does business attraction work. So that's our partner in terms of finding prospects. And so through the Hawthorne Foundation, they are funded, and then we are a member of that. And it gets us great access. As I've told Mike and Lenore, when I'm able to attend their meetings, it's the who's who of economic development in that room, and those are the right people we need to be talking to, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Patrick? All right, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Next up is fleet management. Jason, you going solo? No, you're not.
Okay, good evening, council, President Protam. Fleet Department, right now I have with me Kristin DePong. She's my budget and procurement coordinator, and this is her. This is what she's done here, so that's good on her. I also have one fleet coordinator. I have six mechanics, and with that, I also have one that is an actual police car builder right now, and we're trying to kick these vehicles out, which I'll go over. It's one of my, one of my challenges. Sorry about that. Right now, we're fully staffed. That's great. We're fully staffed, and what this is going to do is avoids us from outsourcing a lot of this equipment out to mechanical shops. Some of our accomplishments are the same as our accomplishments from last year, because we're still working, we still have challenges, I should say, that each time we win with a challenge, it becomes an accomplishment. I still have 2023 trucks that I'm trying to build right now. So with that, we've accomplished to be able to budget well, not ask for more money per se, and get through this. And again, try to keep as much of the repair in-house as possible. Some of the challenges, of course, are the economy, the vehicle upfitting, that is the challenge right now. Every vehicle that I had on order between the year of 2022 and now has come in. They all arrived, and they all arrived at one time. So with that said, all of the upfitting that does get outsourced, dump trucks, get the dump bodies put on them, and any other flatbeds, any of the vehicles that do get upfitted right now, they are all right now scheduled to go through the awarded vendor that we're using. With that, for the police department vehicles, 34 vehicles that are being built one at a time. We have outsourced to help us build. That's proved not to be as fast as we thought it would be, but we're just, we're plugging away, and we are winning, but it's a slow process. I'm hoping to be here next year, and we'll be back to a normal schedule of what I'm proposing for the 2026 budget. The supply chain, it's still, it's still wonky. It's still, there's, some parts are out there. We found our, for time, we found ourselves having to outsource to not OEM parts, just to get a part in, to get that vehicle back. And I'm not talking about, like, I'm talking about trim parts for cars, not like alternators or safety parts that you need, but just pieces and parts that you can actually slap on a vehicle, get it back out there, the vehicle still looks good and is repaired. As far as that goes with customer service, of course, if you got to wait for parts, the customer's not happy, which means the department's not happy, and we're just trying to keep things going, moving vehicles from department to department to help keep them moving along. And of course, that is the, one of the challenges we have also is city growth. Is the city growth, with city growth, of course, we stay the same size, the city continues to grow, we still have the PMs that are due, we still have a lot of equipment coming in and going out. And then, of course, department communication, trying to keep that cycle moving, where we keep vehicles coming in, going out, coming in and going out for, to ensure that they're maintained and on the road and safe. Going on to the actual budget, some changes that are worth noting is under my 5120 charges for contract services. I know that says it has 172% increase. What I've done there is I increased that by 5,000, and that was to accommodate, because we are going to get a new building next year. I do have a lot of stuff to move, to include three large containers, and with that, you know, we're talking probably 1,500 bucks a piece for a container for movement, and those containers are full. It's not stuff we can unload and reload, that would really be silly to do it that way. really be silly to do it that way. So any money that's left over from that would go back to the, to the, to the, back to the funds. 5715, which is my training, we increased that budget by 3,000, and that was to accommodate for the, I'm going to call it the combination sewer trucks, the big trucks that you have out there, look like elephants vacuums style. Those right there, we need to get the mechanics spun up on those. They can repair the body, or I'm sorry, the, the truck part of it. However, they're having a little bit of difficulty when it comes to the actual body piece of it, the fans and the clutches and everything else that's, that's set up on those trucks. And then, of course, our capital, last but not least, is the capital asset that I've requested, which was replacement for our 2009 Colorado. The truck is up there in age, mileage, it's, it's going to be 100,000 by the time the thing gets replaced. And it's one of them old four-cylinder, the old-style Colorados. Other than that, do I have any questions for my budget, for the fleet budget?
Any questions for Jason? Councilmember Boyer.
How many vehicles do we have?
Oh, okay. For the, for, for the city, other than, I don't have environmental services vehicles. We have 301 vehicles total. I have 73 trailer, I know you didn't ask for that, but you have 73 trailers total and 107 pieces of equipment. Piece of equipment is like a backhoe. So yeah, we have quite a bit.
Very good. Thank you. That's his favorite question.
A fleet manager, that should be the question, I guess.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Jason? All right. Thank you very much, Jason. Mr. Woods, I believe it's your turn.
Hello. Good evening. So I'm here, first off, the Planning Group and the JIS, it's seven employees, includes me and four total in planning, and then I have three in GIS. So we're, we're always working on updating our maps, and this is our, one of our first things that we're proud of, that I like to show off. And this continues to be a big hit on our website. This is, we've got about 30, over 30,000 users that are going in and checking on this. This is something we meet on pretty much every couple of weeks to definitely every month, to make sure it's updated with new development information, public hearings that are upcoming up. So that's a good resource, and I think that's something we're real proud of, and it gets a lot of hits, and we're always, always kind of keeping up on that. So I think there's a lot of good information there, and it's being used by the city residents. Just as, you know, kind of, kind of following up on what Patrick said, a lot of the stuff that he's involved with, the stuff that we're involved with, so there's a lot of new projects going through. This is just a list of things we've worked on, and a lot of this, the council sees. You all kind of see this and voting on it, so you kind of see what we're doing all the time. We've got some big agendas coming up, so that's always, I don't know if I'd say that's a challenge, but you never know what the challenges are month to month, just depending on what's being submitted and going through the process. And I guess the other challenge we have is just, you know, a lot of the developments we're seeing coming through are not necessarily things that we've always envisioned happening in the city. It's kind of, we're kind of seeing a lot of the things that we thought were going to be commercial or industrial, we're getting pressure to have residential on those in different spots. So that's kind of a thing we're always kind of talking about. And kind of following up on that, one of the big things that we do, and over the last year, we've had the most amount of meetings. We've had, you know, 15 meetings of the build-in-the-o over the last year, which we get a lot of positive feedback on those. And I think that's been a good thing that we've been doing. And we've, we always have, have those kind of early in the process to make sure we're getting the feedback from the council and the staff. So that's something, you know, we're proud to do, and I think that's important for the city to keep doing. And then we have some code changes. We've kind of listed those there that we've worked on. Just on my, on the budget here, there's really, there's no, there's no fluff in here at all. It's pretty much bare bones, status quo kind of thing. I would say we're pretty much reducing all of our operating costs, you know, from last year, or, you know, 2025 to 26. We've gone down pretty much everywhere. Travel and training's down. One thing I wanted to touch on was the contract services. We're in a consortium with St. Charles County, where we pay so much per year, little, almost 14,000 a year for new aerial photos. This is the last year of that contract. So I did have a meeting with them in the last couple of months, and they're, they're wanting to do a new contract with that. And we're thinking for next time around, it'll be a little bit more, but we'll get new aerial photos every year. So that's something that's out there. But this budget is, this is the last year of our contract with them, coming up on that. And then, pretty much everything else is going down, but the one thing that, the big number is our technology system, is we had a lot of stuff going on in there. It's our ESRI, it's our online mapping information's in there, GeoDocs. We're hoping we might be able to do something new with that. Maybe we could take that over and do it ourselves, but right now, it's about $6,000 you're paying. That's where we can actually, all of our historical records are been, have been scanned in, and we can access those through our, through our online mapping system and view records. So that's what we're paying there. And the other big, big change, that's the big number, I guess, is CitizenServe. Pretty much the whole city depart, or all the city department uses, users are in this budget. Everything for the CitizenServe users are in here, so that's in my budget for all the city. And then we moved all of our, we're trying to move our, most of our server stuff online cloud. So we've got an online fee for that, that's a yearly fee that we have to pay for that. So that's all in there. And that's pretty much my big, big stuff I wanted to mention.
All right. Any questions for David? Councilman Wechsler.
Thank you. David, when I was on Planning and Zoning, I was able to go to that UMSO Chancer's Certificate course. Does that come out of your budget, or?
It has, yeah.
Okay. And is that under that, would that be under that training?
I had, yeah, in the past I had some, but I don't have any in there now.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I needed. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Woods? All right. Thank you, David.
And then part of, my group includes Chris, and he's got building and code enforcement.
Okay. Test. Okay. So it's hard to kind of really define our metrics in, in terms of numbers, but the success of Patrick, the success of, of our new subdivisions, that's, that's our success. The, you know, the more homes we get, the more businesses we get, the more work we have. So we just strive to do the best we can, as fast as we can, and just keep up with all of the new building that, that's going on. We're slightly down on code enforcement this year, just due to, we've had some personnel changes and vacancies, but we're still keeping on top of all of, all of the online complaints, and, and we're still in a good position, and we should be full here in the next few weeks. Last year, we implemented a new residential building supervisor, which has been a great addition. We've, we've had a few vacancies in the residential side, and so he primarily focuses on getting us trained up and constant codes. As you'll see, I believe, on the next one, is, is we obviously passed the new building codes this year, so that's been a big challenge, educating builders, residents, you know, it's, it's a huge undertaking. And so we're, we're trying to keep up with that. And again, that's, that's kind of this here, building codes are extensive. He's invested a lot of time. But other than that, it's, it's just trying to keep up. The only other real problem that we're facing is, is, is basically getting compliance has become more and more difficult. And, you know, defiance and hostility is more commonplace than it has been in the past. And we all know that the, the world is changing, but it's increasingly more difficult on us to get our job done effectively and efficiently. But, you know, we'll keep, keep trucking on, and we'll get it done. So then I think we're going to do this year, as far as budget is concerned, right now, we use landscape to abate our, our grass nuisances. And so this year, we're going to try and go with, we're going to try and give them a little break, and we're going to try contract service. And so that's a big increase. Where is that at? Yeah, we're going up to 19,000. Oh, well, that's what's on my sheet. I think it's a little bit less than that. But what, what is notable in this is when we, when we abate a nuisance, we bill the property owner. If the property owner does not pay, that goes on their personal, personal property taxes. So this is almost 100% recoverable in, in the long term, mostly in the short term, but in the long term. So it's really not, you know, we're going to spend more, we're going to get more back. Other than that, my boring is very basic, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Councilmember Ragsdale.
Thank you. This isn't a budget question, but just an informational question. At what point do you all go out and cut somebody's grass?
Typically, so typically, we give them a 10-day notice. If they don't do it, and at first, at first offender, I guess, of the year, we'll give them a second notice. Then that's when we apply, we'll then apply for a search warrant and go and, and go and cut it. The shortest time that we can do that is about 30 days. If we give one notice to a repeat offender, we'll give one notice, then it's immediately a ticket, apply for warrant, and, and then it takes approximately seven days to get on Bob's schedule to mow. So we're hoping to shorten it up a little bit with this contract service. We'll get, you know, in next day or the day after service after that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilmember Roth, did you have a question as well?
Yes, sir. This is more of an information question, too.
Sure.
What part of the business permits or license do you deal with? Do you check on business license, or?
We, well, finance takes care of business licenses, but when they don't get a business license, as everything else comes to code enforcement. So that's when we step in, where they haven't paid after a couple of months, and we start knocking on doors and try to get results.
Would you have any idea how a business can operate for a year or two without a business license?
No.
Just kind of falls through the crack?
We, 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 finance sends those to us to enforce. We don't actively, you know, they're assigned, basically assigned by finance.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
I know you and I have talked about this, and I still, thank you. The fees for landlords and the rentals in the area. I see it as an opportunity to make revenue for the city. Again, you know, I have a rental somewhere else. I have to pay the fees every year. It's only $50.
Yeah.
But considering there's that many rentals in O'Fallon now, it is an opportunity to, for one, know who is the landlord.
Yep.
So that there is a grass issue or something, we can have a contact. And then it's also a revenue source. And we've talked about this a couple of times. Are we moving forward with that, or not?
Well, when we initially looked at it, we didn't see a whole lot of benefit to it, because we do have all the ownership information. Every applicant for a rental has to have that ownership information on there. But we could certainly take another look at it. I mean, because I do know that there just, property is getting bought up everywhere. Rental, rental inspections are going way up. So we may take another look at that if you'd like, and.
Well, and, and like I said, Floor Center requires you to even take a class.
Yes.
And letting you know that as, as the landlord, you're responsible. If there's a police officer that has to respond to that property for whatever reason, you know, they kind, they let the landlord know.
Yeah.
And so it just gives a little bit more responsibility to some of these rental properties that are out there.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Maybe that's something we can put on a future workshop.
Yeah, yeah. We'll take a look. Absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Goff? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Moving on to Municipal Court, Mr. Chapel.
Good evening. A few accomplishments. We have worked on, oop, that's my goals. Sorry. There we go. Obviously, continued operations of Walden Spring and Lake St. Louis, as Mike spoke to in the opening. Those are moving through our third year of our five-year initial contracts with them. So we'll be looking at some revisions or renewals here in the next year or two. We assisted the Police Communications with transitioning to a paperless warrant system. So we got rid of two filing cabinets. Tanya, they've got a couple extra filing cabinets. So we have eliminated a lot of that. We are also working on getting rid of our legacy system in our court operations. Three years ago, we switched to Show Me Courts, or as many of you know, CaseNet. So we are the backside of that. So our old in-code system, IT tells me I have to get off of it. It's a safety issue. So we are actively working on that as well. And biggest accomplishment, I think personally, but also for the whole state, was we worked with the legislature to pass the Judicial Privacy Act. So I was at a conference in February, and Minnesota was speaking on how they increased their state Privacy Act to cover their court staff, not just judges. So I came back and worked with our legislatures to get that passed. So my staff and I have the same opportunities for privacy that the judges have, especially as we work with more and more of these sovereign citizens. And they have put liens on people's properties of our judges and court staff. And we want to try to avoid that. So we got that legislation passed this year. So that was a major accomplishment. And that was done through our local representative, Mr. Henman, and our lobbyist that got us through all of that, but was a great accomplishment. So 26 goals. In the budget this year, there is a capital request to update the technology in the courtroom. It's 10 years old, very wonky. And with more and more body cameras, footage, and everything else, we need to get up to date on that before we come too late. So you'll see that in the budget. And then that'll also allow us to move to some virtual dockets. Our judge does virtual dockets in Creve Court, where he is a judge as well, so he's already familiar with it. And we can look at saving some opportunities there to save resources for bailiffs and stuff, but also give another opportunity for those that are out of state or out of the area. So also opportunity to review staffing opportunities. I do have one of my long-term employees, LaJana, that's been with us for 25 years, my deputy that will be retiring in '26. So that'll give us time to look and see what, now that things have changed with our taking on courts, what we can look at, changing operational duties and staff allocation. So. And then obviously, as Mike stated in his opening, continuing to be a leader in the region and the state, as we have for many years. So those are our goals and our accomplishments for our little department. As to the budget itself, it's pretty much rinse and repeat. I've been very consistent over the many years. I am asking for more in postage. As I alluded to, the volume increases does require us to send out a few more notices, and the postal service has increased their rates significantly every year. So we still have to use snail mail for several things, so that's one of the increases we have. But everything else has pretty much been consistent, other than the capital that I discussed in the opening. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Good job, Mr. Chapel. Any questions for Mr. Chapel? Councilmember Ragsdale.
Thank you. With the success of us having the courts for Walden Springs and, or Walden Spring and Lake St. Louis, what do you think the opportunity is to expand that to other municipalities in the area?
First of all, they have to be contiguous, so there's only a few other options. It would also definitely change our operational structure significantly and our resource needs. One being bailiffs, two being, right now, we've pretty much stretched every Monday that we have and Wednesday that we have by adding in another city. And putting in additional nights would put a lot more resource stream, especially when we come to bailiffs and judges and prosecutors. So the, the cost of that, which would have to be passed on to that new entity, would probably be cost prohibitive for that new entity. But we would look at it. I mean, I'm not saying it's not a, but those would have to, those variables would have to go into play into that. Because our business plan initially was with the resources that we have, but those fees would come. we have, but those fees would cover what we have. To add in those, I think those fees would be a little bit different. But always open discussions.
Any other questions for Mr. Chapel? All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, police and post-training. Chief? Major? So you brought a whole team?
Got a couple lines. Good evening, Mayor Protime and City Council. Tonight, we are pleased to go over the Police Department budget for 2026 with everyone and take questions at the end. To start off some of our accomplishments over the last year, we did an integration of, sorry. There you go. I can't see. We did an integration of AI training in the Communication Center. We continued with the Vehicle Longevity Program. We have 77 vehicles out now to officers. We continued our community training to the community with Stop the Bleed classes, Women's Self-Defense classes, Teen Driving classes, Safety Town, Citizens Academy, and the Community Emergency Response Team. We were the recipient of the Community Catalyst Award from the O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce. We received designation from the state of Missouri with the Missouri Blue Shield community designation. We were the first municipality in St. Charles County. We did the soft launch of our Real-Time Information Center with technology, which actually the same technology that assisted in homicide investigation and a serial stabbing investigation that we had on the north end of the city. We had two graduates of Northwestern Command School, which helps us for succession planning into the future. I know I'm not supposed to use acronyms, but I couldn't fit this on the line. But as of right now, we are in charge of the Drug Task Force, the Crisis Negotiator Team. We're second command of the Regional SWAT Team, president of the Eastern Missouri Police Academy, and we have a detached academy instructor, and we are leading the county in all facets of what we can. We are well into the Training Center construction. The range opened in 2025. The next phase has started now. We had a Clio reaccreditation this year that we passed. Tanya stole my thunder with the Mental Health Coordinator that we put on staff at the end of July. We continue with our federal, state, and local partnerships with the DEA, HSI, and we have created a new bicycle team with the City of St. Charles where we share resources with Heritage and Freedom Fest and Festival of Little Hills where everyone's interchangeable and we assist each other out and help where we can. We've also provided communications and jail services to the City of Cotterville and St. Charles Community College. Some of the challenges we face are hiring, recruiting, and retention. We've streamlined our process. We've put an academy instructor in place at the academy so we can get firsthand picks on recruits. With your permission, we've started a recruit program, which has been nothing but successful. We continue to be competitive with salary and benefits. And the Vehicle Longevity Program has been nothing short of amazing in keeping people here with retention and attracting new applicants. Adapting and keeping up with new technology. Technology is exploding before us. Using the Real-Time Information Center to take our siloed information to put behind one single pane of glass is one of the ways we are keeping ahead of technology. New technology, like I said, it continues to explode, and we're using a new system, using AI to extrapolate information from our CAD and RMS system for reporting. It increases the speed of gathering information. Information's more accurate. We've, along the same lines, we've also introduced AI at a still very low level with the communications training systems that we have. We have found that agencies around us are starting to incorporate AI systems into their report-writing systems, which is still scary, but they're using what's called closed AI instead of open AI, which is supposed to be more secure, and we're exploring that right now. Training and development, we're always looking at ways to reduce exposure to liability through training and develop, development. We're molding our future leaders for the department. Funding, resource constraints, infrastructure modernization, we're always looking for partnerships or grant funds to alleviate the stress on our budget. And officer wellness, morale, and mental health is, you know, let's be honest, there's things out there that we shouldn't have to see, but we do see it. And to be able to cope through that with someone on staff has been great for our employees. And kudos to the city for letting us go forward with that. Some budget highlights for last year. We were awarded the Blue Shield Grant. We purchased nine ballistic shields for $50,000. We were approved for the Norfolk Southern Grant for supplies to teach communities Stop the Bleed classes. We've shifted from DJI drones to two Brink drones this year, which are US-made for about a $45,000 cost of the budget. We have 35 body armor replacements this year. Drainage repairs at the Justice Center ended the tune of about $30,000. We replace outdoor warning sirens every 20 years. We have two coming up this year. That'll cost around $117,000, 14 vehicle replacements. We switched from regular bicycles to e-bicycles, and of course, the repairs on those went up. So that's going to, you're going to see an increase in our bike repair budget. We're always pursuing partnerships for our Real-Time Information Center. We had two meetings today, and we think we have a couple cities on the hook to come be partners with us on that. We continue to explore drones as first responder programs, and we're also exploring virtual reality training, which is more realistic, portable, and it's keeping up with technology. So with that, I'm going to let Trent go over the budget highlights unless there's any questions real quick on that part.
Any questions so far? All right. Continue on.
So starting with the post-training fund, we're going to have a 33% increase. It's about $5,000. Our inmate security fund, we'll see about a 5% increase. Then for our general fund, I'm just going to talk about the increases that are 15% or higher. Charges for other governments for our regional drug task force, our annual fees are increasing 25%. Our office supplies are increasing about 15%. Just our demand for batteries and increasing cost of batteries for that increase there. Our cleaning supplies are increasing approximately 17%. Main reason for that increase is for extreme biocleanings after prisoners are being released. Bike patrol, 38% increase for the e-bike repairs. That only equates to about $700. So it's not that much of an increase there. And then our internet access is a 74% increase. That increase is for a separate dedicated line for the Real-Time Information Center. For use tax, our technology account has a approximately 21% increase. That is for numerous items, Real-Time Information Center, the FLOX system renewal for that, our body camera renewal and last payment of our current agreement, our team software, which will be for training, education, accounting, management, and scheduling. As the chief had noted, our small equipment account will see about a 40% increase, and that's for 35 body armors. And then switching to our capital items, as he noted, the drainage repairs, our maintenance department noted, some of the sidewalks are prone to stain, what, during freezing or during the winter months and freezing. So we're going to address fixing that. Ongoing maintenance for the Real-Time Information Center, all the equipment that's going to be put into that room. This will be 24/7 support for that in the event something would go down. Two medium American-made drones, as he noted. We actually purchased one this year. So next year will be year two of an agreement with that, and then a second one to add to that as we phase out the Chinese-made drones. Replacing the two of our 17 outdoor warning sirens, rifle suppressors, some of those are replacements for end-of-life, adding two additional SWAT officers, and then 10 of those to mitigate the noise while our officers are training at the outside range castle, I should say. And then vehicles, as it's noted up there, 14 are replacements. Nine of those are going to be explorers, two are F-150s, 10 of which are for patrol, one is for K-9. And then we have three detective vehicles, and then eight additional replacement-mounted radios that are for 2025 vehicles that won't be built until 2026. And then I was going to leave it to you for the Police Training Facility Fund. If you have any notes on that?
I do not have any notes on that right now.
Any questions about anything else?
Councilmember Taylor?
What's the inmate security fund?
So that's for housing our prisoners.
It's a $2 fee paid by the defendants on the cases that are paid through our court. So we get $2 collected that goes dedicated strictly to anything related to the jail. We also have Walden Spring and Lake St. Louis that pay their $2 back to us because it also covers fingerprints. So when they can, when we have to do fingerprint orders, so they, that fee is actually brought back to ours as well. But it has to be, it can only be spent on certain things related to the jail.
Any other questions? All right. Anything else, chief?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good job, fellas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Snowden?
Relative to the Police Training Facility Fund, Ms. Boshert will take care of that.
Okay, very good.
So on the Police Training Facility Fund, we are issuing the bonds this year, and we've encumbered the construction of the facility this year. So a majority of what you're going to see next year, you're going to see the debt service payment. You're going to see an intergovernmental payment, approximately $817,000, which is going to be the portion that the City of St. Charles is going to pay O'Fallon to make their half of the debt service. And then you're also going to be, see some incidental items that may be needed for the facility. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Vicki? Looks like we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the Environmental Services Fund. Mr. Bender and Mr. Winzerro.
Good evening. So in the Environmental Services Funds, our 2025 accomplishments are that we converted the whole city back to a single-stream recycling. With that, we had about 15% participation rate in recycling before. We're at somewhere around 45% participation rate now with the new single stream. So that's going in a good direction there. We've provided residents with actually 14 free events, including the bulk drop-offs, electronic, and appliance recycling, and shredding events. And then for the 24 straight year, we've been able to offer our residents the exemplary service with no rate increase. So ever since the service was created 24 years ago, we never had a rate increase. As for goals in 2026, a goal is to continue to increase our residential roll-off service by another 10%. And then one of the challenges we have is keeping up with our yard waste. And with this budget, we're asking for two service route operators to add a route for yard waste and one part-time customer service rep to keep up with the new customers. We haven't increased staff in yard waste in over 10 years. We've added more than 3,500 customers over that period of time, which is well more than an additional route. So they've been covering it with other personnel. So now it's time to actually create another route, and there'd be a new truck later on in the budget for that, for those personnel. And the customer service is part-time. But, you know, similarly, the customer count is increasing every year, and we haven't added customer service reps in a long time. For the capital, we got two side-load refuse trucks. We keep our trucks on a fairly consistent cycle to refresh them once they get older. So this year, it's two side-load trucks. And then the next line is the rear-load yard waste truck for the new employees on the yard waste. Annual refuse carts purchases, $80,000. Every year, we spend money on replacements and new carts for new customers. Normally, we're at about $180,000 for that. We're down to $80,000 for that this year because we're able to reuse some of the carts that we collected for the recycle event, or the single stream, I'm sorry. Some of the big changes on the operating side, insurance claims, you'll see this in a lot of our lines, the hail revenue came in. We're not going to have that again next year. So that's why there's such a big increase on the insurance claims. Our advertising number shows down 82, almost 83%. That's because of the single stream. We spent a lot of money on advertising this year. We're not going to spend that money again next year. Furniture is going up by 73%. That's because we're adding a cubicle for the new employee, the new customer service person. And so it's not a whole lot of money, but it's a percentage-wise, it's a big number. And then equipment rental was, again, single-stream recycling-related because when we made that conversion, we rented trucks to help with that. We're not going to be spending that money again next year. And that is it for Environmental Services. If you have any questions, Jim's here to answer them.
Any questions? We'll start with Councilmember Roth.
Thanks, sir. I just got an information question. When does the yard waste stop, and when do you begin again?
I'll have to look at the exact date, but it's the second week of December it stops. And then we pick up once a month in, or I'm sorry, yeah, one week a month in January and one week a month in February. And then we start back up full-time again in the second week of March.
What week is it in December and January? Or January and February?
It should be on the, I'll get it to you. It's on the website, and it's on the Resident Information Guides. But it's, I don't remember if they picked the second or the third week, but I'll find out for you.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Taylor?
I was just going to ask this silly question, but where do you dump the yard waste at? I only ask because I started getting all these emails about saving the butterflies and salamanders. I don't know if you all did, too. It was weird. And they talked about the yard waste and where we dumped it. So I just wondered.
The yard waste is dumped at Hanson's, right up the street from our transfer station.
And they compost it and make it into a product that they sell, right?
They do.
Yeah. Excellent. Any other questions? Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you. Just a quick question on the landfill fees. Is that a typical increase that we see from them year over year?
No. Our landfill fees are set, we have a contract with public service for landfill fees, and it's set for 10 years, and we're in year seven. But the change, the big change is the recycling processing fees for the single stream. So that's kind of why the budget is kind of slimmed down this year, just to kind of get a feel for how this is going to affect us. So we're going to get a year under our belt. We've ordered the minimum items on this year's budget. But I'm comfortable with it. I think it's going to be fine. Our trash tonnages will come down as more recycle comes in. So yes, we will pay more for the recycle processing, but we'll pay less in trash fees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Snowden?
Thank you. I have the answer for Councilmember Roth. It's the first full week of each month, so January 6th through 9th and February 3rd through 6th.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. All right. If there's no other questions, thank you, Mr. Winzerro. Moving on to the Stormwater Fund?
In the Stormwater Fund, our achievement is that we completed inspections of 10% of the system. We have all our structures and pipes on a 10-year rotation for inspections. And so we completed that. On the capital side of the budget, we have stormwater pipelining budgeted for $400,000 next year, and repairs to non-compliant basins at $100,000. And that's actually managed through the Engineering Department, where they're getting the subdivisions that aren't maintaining their basins to get them up to compliance. And that money is reimbursable, whatever is spent there, we try to get that back. And then on Daniel Drive, again, it's an engineering project, but that's money for the design of stormwater improvements on the Daniel Drive area. In our operating budget, some significant changes are the part-time wages is showing 148% increase, and that's because we are doing more basin inspections. And that's because we are doing more basin inspections every year now. So, we shifted some resources to increase that. And that's why that number's gone up as it is shown there. And then the insurance claims is the hail situation. But we also have what's showing up as a decrease of 63% in illicit discharge and illicit discharge prevention. That number is not quite right because of the encumbrance situation where we have some purchase orders that were encumbered from prior year carrying over. And it's not actually a 63% decrease because of that. The actual is more like a 6% decrease. And that's for the markers on the drains that say, you know, don't dump trash to the drains that we put on the inlets there. And I think our expense there was $3,500 this year, but we spent something like $5,000 last year, or $4,000 last year, something like that. And that's it for stormwater, if there's any questions.
Any questions for, on stormwater? Okay, looks like we're good. Moving on to water service line insurance fund. We'll try and get through this one and the next one, then we'll take a break, if that's all right.
Okay. So, water service line insurance fund, the background on this is that this is funded by $12 on your property tax bill annually, so that's $12 for the entire year. In 2024, we did 23 repairs, year-to-date as of September 30th anyway. We had done 22 repairs, so we're trending upward with that because there's still three more months to account for there. Basically, we're doing things pretty much the same as last year. One of the notable differences in operating budget is our right-of-way easement repairs is showing almost an 80% decrease. This goes back so that those encumbrances where we had a prior year PO carryover into this year, and that doesn't reflect the actual number of what we're spending this year. So, you take that out, and it's really staying the same for next year, even though it shows up like it does on the forms there. So, that's it for the water service line fund. Any questions?
Any questions on that one? All right, looks like we're good. Sewer lateral insurance fund.
So, sewer lateral, this is funded by a $30 bill on your property tax bill. And again, that's just a one-time for the whole year. Last year, we had 46 repairs in this fund. We're at 51 repairs year-to-date as of September 30th. So, again, this one's trending upward on that. Again, this fund, we're just planning to do the same thing as we did last year, but there are some operating numbers that kinda show up with some big percentage differences. Wages on overtime is showing 50%, 57% increase. And that is a trend that we're seeing a lot more overtime, evening, weekend repairs with this fund. And so, those numbers are trending up, so we are actually asking for a little bit more in this account for the part-time, or overtime, I'm sorry. Charges for contract services, it shows a decrease of 42%. And we are actually indeed asking for less in that area, doing more stuff in-house. And then the insurance claim, again, shows up as a 93% decrease, but that's the hail situation. And then right-of-way easement repairs, the same thing that we saw on the water service line, but actually, we're staying the same as far as what we're spending in that. So, that's it for sewer lateral, if there's any questions.
Any questions from anyone?
I actually have one. I recognize too that property tax bill fees that we're charging have been the same for a number of years now. Are we still, are we looking okay for the foreseeable future? Or do we need to reevaluate those at some point?
So, yes, we are looking good for now and for the next few years, anyway. I would point out too that this is authorized by the state legislature. So, we're at the maximum we can on the water service line, but we could actually increase it on the sewer side if we needed to.
Okay. And we don't wanna do that unless we need to, of course, but...
Correct, yeah, and it would have to require a vote to do that. It's not an easy change.
Right, right. Fair enough. All right, we're about halfway through. We have 41 items, that was 20th item, and we've been going for a couple hours. I would entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Sure. Sorry.
Real quick, on this $30 on the property tax bill and the one before, the $12, is that automatically put on there? Or does the resident have to call and like sign up for that?
No, it's automatically put on there for the eligible properties.
So, all residents of O'Fallon automatically get that on there?
So, there are some restrictions, and I don't know them all off the top of my head, but every single-family home is eligible. And I think up to quadplexes are. But there's a cutoff, I think, after that, that they're not eligible.
Okay, so, but if they're eligible, it's already being done?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Just for clarity, that's only if you're hooked up to city water and/or city sewer, or not?
Not, because we do cover the whole city with those programs, yeah.
Good to know, thank you. All right, I have a motion on the table, or on the floor, by Councilmember Taylor and a second by Councilmember Boyer to take a 10-minute recess. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. We'll be back in here at 7:38 PM. Need a motion to reconvene?
Motion, Wexler.
Okay, Councilmember Wexler first and Councilmember, what? Councilmember Thompson second?
What? He said he's a third.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, let's reconvene this 2026 budget meeting at 7:42. Next item up is still Mr. Bender with the water fund.
That's correct. So, in our water division, our 2025 accomplishments are that we added a new well feeding into our water treatment plant. We call that Oluvio Well Number Six. That's been completed and in service nowadays. We began construction of the water treatment plant upgrades this year. That's a comprehensive upgrade to the whole plant, but the most notable aspect of that is replacing the reverse osmosis systems, the RO systems at the plant that have been used for almost 24 years or 23 years now. We also began construction of upgrades to our distribution wells, Number Three and Four, and that's to switch to the chloramine treatments that we talked about when the project was approved. And we also have been replacing the old water mains. I have the Hilltop Manor, but that was actually a prior year. I didn't get that updated. We've been in the Cortez neighborhood this year with our water main replacements. Our 2026 goals are to complete construction of the water treatment plant upgrades, complete construction of the upgrades to wells Three and Four, and then do a design for the pre-oxidation project at the water treatment plant. For capital, we don't have a whole lot of capital in water, but as I just mentioned, we have a lot of big capital projects from this year that are carrying over into next year. So, the main capital in the water division next year is the replacing a tandem axle dump truck for $210,000. Looking through our operating funds, some of the big changes there. Our overtime costs have been trending upwards with a 31% increase. We have had an increase in emergencies that have come in nights and weekends, and that's what we're increasing that for. The hail insurance claims that I've mentioned multiple times already, that won't be in the next year's budget. Our water main replacement, we're actually decreasing those expenses by a little bit, requesting a little bit less in that account. And then water plant maintenance, we're also decreasing by a little bit, 22%. Sounds like a lot, but the actual decrease is only $5,000 in that line. Other than that, it's pretty much the same. Right-of-way easement repairs, we're looking at, it's showing up as a 44% increase, but that's our decrease, sorry. That's because of the encumbrances that I mentioned earlier. The actual number is decreasing, is only $5,000, and that is really only an 11% decrease in that account. And our chemicals, we're looking at a 30% decrease in our chemical line. And we are requesting less, but that is also because of the, that number is higher because of the encumbrances, some prior year POs that carry over. And that's all I have for water, if there's any questions.
Any questions for water?
I was just gonna remind you, your microphone's not on, sir.
Thank you.
So, sewer division, our 2025 accomplishments are that we inspected 20% of the collection system. In our sewer fund, we do a five-year rotation, so that inspection occurred on 20% of our manholes and our pipes in the system this year. We are also working on the new Headworks project, and we're nearing completion of that. The new screens should be tested out here in the next couple weeks or so. Our Peru Creek Lagoon project is nearing completion as well. And they are also in the middle of implementing a new preventative maintenance software out of the plants and the lift stations. Our 2026 goals and challenges are, we want to replace the sewer plant's grit removal system. That is the system that's right after the Headworks. And then also looking at replacing the odor control system out there. And we want to begin construction of the biosolid centrifuge project, which will be the big project that's scheduled for work next year. So, in terms of the capital numbers, the centrifuges that I just mentioned, that's a $2.4 million project. We'll continue with our annual sanitary sewer lining project at $200,000 a year. Our lift station upgrades at $300,000 a year, and that's an annual project that we address all the deficiencies in our lift stations. We're up to 18 lift stations that we're maintaining. The next line is our manhole rehabilitation at $100,000. So, that is identifying problem manholes that are not repairable with our own in-house crews and contracting that out. We have $575,000 programmed for the Barrington Relief Sewer. That's in the Copperfield subdivision, where we've had a number of sewer backups over the years. And this will provide relief to that area during those events. And then our sewer plant is scheduled for some WAST tank improvements for $200,000. And then we also have miscellaneous vehicle and equipment replacements per fleet. Whatever Jason tells us to do, we do it there. And in the operating, the significant differences, at least as they show up on the paperwork, is that our charges for contract services is a 30% decrease. And that is mostly because of some administration fees, some administration charges are fun for the services that they're provided that are related to sewer. And that's decreasing next year and causing a little decrease in that account. I already mentioned the hail line. Right-of-way easement repairs, same story. That's the POs and encumbrances, but we're really just staying the same in that line. Sewer plant repair and maintenance, a 45% decrease. We are requesting a lesser amount in that. For one, it's, there was $100,000 for painting that, well, we're not gonna do next year, so. And this year, it was $100,000. We're not gonna do it again next year. Our chemical lines are decreasing. We are looking at a lesser amount, but it's not the 54% that's indicated there because of the encumbrances and the POs that are rolling over. We are requesting $56,000 less, but that's only a 10% change in terms of what we have this year. And utilities is listed as a 21% decrease, and we are requesting less for utilities because those numbers had been trending a little less than what we had budgeted this year. Landfill fees is one that is going up, unfortunately. Our current landfill provider has been declining our product occasionally. And they've been having some problems with the odors at their facility and telling us that we can't bring our product there. So, we're having to look for another location, and we've increased the line there to account for that. And we're looking for other places to take our biosalts. And that's all I have for sewer.
Any questions for sewer? Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you. I apologize if you went over this already, I must have missed it. But on the chemicals line, why is there, it's more than doubled the projected 2025 budget versus the prior years? And then it's coming back down, why is that?
So, what happens there is if we have a 2024 PO that has an encumbrance there, and that's carried over into 2025, that adds to the expenses that are shown for 2025. So, it's kinda doubling up on one year's numbers, so it's not really showing what we're spending for a 12-month period.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Marshall, Jay, you have anything you wanna add since you came up here?
Steve's doing great.
Yes, he is, yes, he is. All right, street and road improvement fund. Thanks, Marshall.
Gotta get to the right page here. So, for the first part of this, our capital projects are managed by engineering. So, Wade's gonna be up here at the end to go cover the capital projects. So, this is just the operating stuff. So, in 2025, our accomplishments are that we have done construction of the Public Works and Fleet Facility, and that's about 50% complete at this point. Looking for an opening of that in August of next year. There are street crews have responded over more than 2,000 service requests. They survived a severe winter season. And subsequent to that, the pothole season was extreme this year, so they survived that as well. In 2026, our goals and our challenges are to continue to provide high-level customer service in response, to remain flexible and react quickly and professionally to changing circumstances. And one of the big things they're doing is to begin producing concrete in-house with the concrete trucks that were budgeted for this year. And we have those, and we're getting those online. And with everything that's been bid out, we're looking at a 30% savings over buying ready mix from a plant when we implement that. Our capital expenses are, again, the new Public Works and Fleet facility, we're looking at budgeting $100,000. Now, that is actually split out between all eight funds, I just put it all here for simplicity. And I will add that we budgeted $30 million roughly for this year, for the project. This year, we're gonna be somewhere more than a million dollars under budget, probably closer to $1.5 million under budget for this year in that project. So, we're trending really good on that project. The next line is the FIZI facility improvements, some designs for some improvements down there. When we built that site about five years ago, we had future phases in mind. One is a new garage and some canopies out there and additional lighting. So, that's what this project is for, and this would do the design for that. We're also looking to budget for snow equipment on seven new trucks that are being purchased that comes to $417,000. Looking at replacing an asphalt patch trailer for $47,000. Looking at replacing a tandem axle dump truck for $210,000. On the operating side, I've already mentioned the hail. That number shows up as a large increase, but it's not actually like that. And then asphalt, cement, and gravel is a 12% increase we're projecting for next year. And that's a result of, they're actually doing more work, using more asphalt, using more concrete. And you'll actually see in your next council agenda that we're asking for increases in both of those for this year. So, that's being carried over into, for next year. Our chemical line item, we're looking at, well, it's showing up as a 27% decrease, but we're actually having an increase in that. Salt is gonna be up $80,000. And that's because of the severe winter we had and refill on our stockpiles. On top of that, the price of salt did go up a little bit this year, so that's where those numbers are coming from. Gas and oil is up 27%. This fund uses a lot of gas and oil, and that's based on the Fleet Department's numbers and their recommendations. And then in technology systems, we have a 38% increasing, increase. That's coming from, we're beginning, or we're in the middle of the process of adding cameras in our large trucks, just like we have in mental services. And the police department, of course, has their cameras. For all our large, single-axle and tandem-axle trucks, we're trying to get cameras in there. There'll be four cameras in each. in each truck. And so we're programming for 10 trucks worth of cameras next year. And that's all I have for streets.
Councilmember Taylor.
We changed how we did our, you know, street pothole repairs a little bit, right? This year, we added the patching instead of just filling the potholes. Do you see, or do you think that'll decrease the amount of asphalt that we use overall?
It's hard to say. I don't think so, because we actually do a more extensive repair that uses more asphalt. And then, you know, maybe down the road, we're stopping it from getting worse because the examples that we showed you in the pictures when we made that change were pretty dramatic. And that's because it got out of control. If we catch it upfront and help prevent that, I think we could actually reduce that. But, you know, initially, the repairs take more asphalt because it's a little bit more upfront because we're doing more work upfront.
But it lasts a lot longer.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, very happy we're doing partial.
That's where you save it down the road.
Yeah, absolutely. Very happy we're doing that again. Councilmember Roth?
Yes, sir, thanks. On the seven trucks we bought for the snow plowing?
Yes.
Do those come equipped with the plow blade, or do we got to buy those separate?
So that's what that line is for. That account pays for the snow plow, the hydraulics, the salt spreader. Yeah, so getting the trucks equipped for snow is quite an expensive endeavor, but that covers all those expenses.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions for streets? Councilmember Taylor?
I just got to know, what are the cameras in the trucks for? Do you wash the workers?
No, it's more for safety and documentation. So actually, you've, we get accused of damaging things quite often, and this protects us. You find that you actually are able to defend our drivers and defend ourselves better by having the cameras in the trucks, because we get blamed for a lot of things that are not really ours that we didn't do.
So they're like dash cameras, kind of like looking outside, not?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wexler.
Not a question, just a quick comment. I've been a snowplow driver before and have been blamed for many mailboxes.
Mr. Snowden.
Would you like to plow again, sir?
Any other questions? All right, very good. Moving on to Police and Road Improvement Use Tax Fund. I believe that's going to be Mr. Montgomery. Are you going to let Chris or Steve talk, or?
What's that?
Are you going to let Chris or Steve talk?
I will, yes, hopefully. All questions go to them, so.
Right, right.
So, good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Thanks for allowing us to present tonight. We're here to present a portion of the SRIF, mainly involving projects that we manage and then also our operating budgets. So with me is Todd Arts. He's our Assistant Director of Engineering. He was brought on this year. And then you guys know Chris Clerk, so he oversees our projects. Todd oversees more of our development side, the traffic side, and stormwater side. So thank you, guys, for spending the evening with me. So with that, engineering. So we'll go over some of our accomplishments this year. As City Administrator mentioned, we rely heavily on outside funds, so it's getting ready to start application season again. I know Chris looks forward to this time of year. Staff works very hard in submitting a lot of very thick applications to various funding sources so that we can afford to do our projects. Without grant funding, we'd be severely limited on the amount of projects, or we'd have to put all of our annual projects and the funds for those into, you know, one capital project. So they do a great job in bringing in funds for the city to, again, allow us to stretch our dollars and do a lot more. So with that, certainly have the emphasis, as you all made it clear to us, and has always been the concern, is maintaining our roadway. So a lot of our major projects that we apply for are either reconstructing our roads, resurfacing our roads, improving the sidewalks. All three of the main streets in various phases are all involving resurfacing and improving that corridor through there. West Terra is a larger project that we're working on to improve traffic flow at West Terra and Bryan Road. Dire Road is in the right-of-way phase, and then we'll be moving into construction phase, depending on when the county completes Hopewell Road. Dire Road Extension was completed. That's the portion through the Harvest Development. That roadway will continue to the west as development continues to the west. With that, Center for Advanced Skills and Law Enforcement Facility, Phase 1, the shooting range was completed this year, and Phase 2 is under construction. The picture to the top right is, it's not too flashy, but it's kind of an oval where they're grading for the EVOC track. I believe they had the pre-construction meeting for the concrete pour, and maybe they're looking to pour next week or two?
Next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks. So that'll be real exciting, and there'll be a lot of concrete going down, and it'll really be taking shape in a couple of weeks, so. Darton Greenway is an exciting project, as well as Bush Connector for Chris and I. We've worked 15 years on trying to secure funds to bring a path through O'Fallon, through the sports park area, connect over to Barrett Haven, and get it over to K. We've spent a lot of times with Great Rivers Greenway and a lot of going downtown and trying to convince them to partner with us on this project. So we've established some good partnerships, and it's really great to see that coming to finally fruition for the residents. Well, Springs Road, again, more or less, it's wrapping up. Some of the landscaping went in past week. It looks really nice today, if you get by out there. Bob and his crew's done a wonderful job, so thank you, guys, for your helps on that. So pavement maintenance, again, big emphasis on this. It keeps to grow every year, and it's going to be growing in the 2026 budget as well. $4 million went to concrete removal and replacement. $1 million, again, to our Tech Crete, kind of concrete-looking, partial depth repair. This year, for the first time, we took on some repairs to our Taro roadways and Wood Lawn, Highway Inn, and Well and Springs Road. Inn isn't quite there. It will be in the next few weeks. West Side of K will be replacing slabs along there. Crack seal, asphalt pavement, and then probably for the first year, really getting into some path maintenance along Fizey and Highway K and then Mexico Road. So again, we know it's a pain. People have to detour and go different routes, but that's all part of the project, and we thank, you know, everybody for their patience during those projects. Developments remain very busy as well. Harvest is a very large development off of Highway Inn, keeps us very busy. Bryan Road Commercial, we continue to get different developments popping up out there. Lee's Chicken was on, I think, P&amp;Z maybe last month. Bryan Road Sports Complex, reviewing plans there. It's a very exciting project. Caledonian Rush, we have a Bank of Old Monroe, Scooters, Dobbs, Cambria Hotel coming in. So a couple other residential developments, Strawberry Farms, Post Farms. Our construction inspection manager, who's been there for a long time, said maybe in the past two weeks, we might have placed more concrete than he's ever seen in a short period of time. Instead, we put down 6.5 miles of concrete roadways in the past few weeks. So the inspectors have been very busy running from project to project. A couple of new programs. These are both part of the strategic plan, but we're just starting on these, really developing a path maintenance program now that we have funds. We want to put some type of schedule to that to keep those paths in better condition and prolong the life of them. Again, arterial street maintenance, we're going to be working on that program as part of the strategic plan in the coming year. Traffic calming continues to be popular. Turtle Creek was completed this year. We have an open house coming up. We'll get dates out to those ward council members for the Preston Woods and Washington's Crossing. We've prepared those plans. And then just recently, we've had two or three more come in, too. So it's been very busy with the traffic calming. A couple of staff changes. We filled two new, not two, but we filled two construction inspection positions. Scott Snyderheisen completed his drone license, so that was a very big accomplishment. We use, although not as cool as what police does with them, police has all the cool toys, but they're very beneficial to us as well. We can record our projects as they go along, day to day, week to week, month to month. We can, like this over to the right, is a picture of a traffic issue. Bryan Road northbound at VMP up there, so we can see the backups. We can see how traffic flows through different intersections, through different subdivisions. We use it to document pavement conditions, maybe before we start a project or start our annual slab repair program. So a lot of different techniques we use that for, and we're glad that Scott has his license now and can assist us. So again, Todd was hired this year. Steve Meyer was promoted to construction inspection supervisor, and TJ Kelly, a longtime employee, was promoted to construction inspection manager. So really glad for those staff members and that we can promote from within. Some of our challenges, continuing with the pavement strategy, kind of turning that clock or rotating all the wards again, so you can kind of see what ward we'll be in for each of those different types of efforts to improve the pavement out there. Additionally, for this year, Ward 3 and 4 is, before we changed to the five-year kind of rotation, we were just about towards 3 and 4, and then based on how things worked out, we kind of changed the rotation. So they really got left behind. So we're going to go back, put a million dollars in, is what we're proposing, to go back and pick up some of the worst streets in those wards, because they've waited for quite some time now to get some slab repair going in there. So that's the increase for this year. We'll figure out if we bid that out separately than our concrete program. That'll be up in Ward 2, but we'll work through that. So again, big, big thanks to all the funds that Council continues to provide this season or this coming year, as mentioned. The SRIF and more funds are going from use tax to maintain our streets versus to police. So we thank them for cooperating with us and allowing us to utilize some of those funds. 2026, as far as the SRIF Street Road Improvement Fund budget, has been a really challenging year. We saw it 10 years out, and it's gotten closer and closer. So our fund balance goes, certainly not negative or anything, but we didn't want it to go any lower. It's sitting at a little over $1 million, but we prefer $2 million in that fund. So for 2026, a lot of the funds are coming from the use tax. And then we'll start building back up in that budget and pulling more equally from both budgets. So just, the worst year was 2026 for that. So with that, department staffing is always a challenge. As mentioned, what we're proposing is a new project manager. The workload, especially the annual projects, has increased over the years. It used to be two and three projects. Maybe we had $1 million for concrete, $300,000 for asphalt, and maybe crack seal. And now we've got, you know, between seven and eight, when you really break it up to asphalt resurfacing, micro-surfacing, crack seal, path maintenance, the partial depth, the concrete. So, and the concrete's at $4 and $5 million versus $1 million. So it's greatly increased. We've treaded water here and kept our heads above it, but with it continuing to increase and us continuing to look for more funds, to provide more funds for our streets, particularly residential streets, we need the staff to help manage that. Just to kind of reiterate that a little bit, here's kind of a history, specifically of our concrete over the past 10 years. And you can see in about 2022, we really started ramping up to $4 million a year. 2023, $4.5 million. And then in 2024 and 2025, we picked up an extra million in the partial depth concrete repair. So, and again, that's proposed for 2026 as well as the additional million. So, and again, per your direction, we're going to look for ways to continue to increase that over the years. So with that, on the presentation, any quick questions before we get into the specific budget?
Councilmember Taylor?
Oh, actually, it was kind of about the budget. The crack seal, we went up significantly, significantly, right?
Crack sealing should have been around the same, about $300,000.
Okay.
Yeah, that, we found that to be a good pocket. We can pretty much cover one ward, and then we rotate around. A five-year program is pretty much in line with as it starts to wear off and needs to be resealed. So, yeah, that's kind of the black strips they do along the joints.
And can you settle a debate?
What's that?
How many engineers do we have on?
In our office, yeah, in our office, we have four, myself and Todd, and then two young engineers, so.
Okay, licensed engineers?
Us two are licensed engineers.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. With that, we'll get into the SRIF budget. Chris, I'll turn it over to you. Any major projects? We have a lot of projects, $4 and $5 million, but any ones you want to highlight there, Chris?
Yeah, I won't go through everything unless you really want me to, but one thing I do want to point out is for our asphalt, the stuff that's in the SRIF for $360,000 is more for the preventive maintenance effort that we're going to look at for next year. And then the use tax will cover the remainder of, we're asking for a total of about $810,000, so the remainder will be coming from use tax, and that will be dedicated to more of a mill and fill. And we'll be working in many different areas of the city, multiple wards and all that. So you'll see maps come out on what that all entails. But I just wanted to point out that that $360 is a portion of the total asphalt. The crack seal, like we just talked about, was the same. Path maintenance stayed the same. Traffic calming, we actually kept the same at $57,500 right now. It was the same as last year and many, a couple of years prior. So we'll be utilizing that, even though the program has gained some interest, and we have a lot of things in motion. We're just keeping the budget the same for that right now. As far as, when you see a $5,000 amount in there, that's kind of a, well, that's a project that's working in the closeout, so we don't generally need to budget a big number there. But we do want to have something there just in case, so that's what the $5,000 would be in some of those areas. But as Wade was mentioning, we do have some pretty significant projects coming up in '26, which we've known for a couple of years now, with Tom Ginever and North Cool Springs intersection, the Hoff Road Phase 2, the Darton Greenway Sports Park to Bluebird Park. You know, those last two are both over $5 million right now. We have another one, Eggering will kick in. That's right at about $1.9 million. And then the Deer Road reconstruction is a $6 million one. That's shown for the '26 budget, but as Wade mentioned, we're coordinating with St. Charles County because they have Hopewell Road intersection, and then they're also looking at Highway Inn intersection work next year. And we do not want to start Deer Road reconstruction if both of those are going on, because we need to have, we need to have relief for traveling public to get them out of that area. So because we will have some traffic control and potential, you know, restrictions and things like that with travelways, so that may move into '27 if it doesn't get bid out very late '26, but we're just going to continue to monitor that. So that is a pretty good-sized number that could transition over to '27, but we wanted to show it in '26, just to make sure we had, we were covered in case everything went perfect in their projects, which we highly, you know, is construction, so that's doubtful. Just wanted to make sure that we're safe on that one. And then West Terra is another big number in there. It's $5.1 million. That is the right-of-way phase of the West Terra and Bryan Road intersection. And for all of those that I talked about with the big numbers, we have offsetting revenues. I didn't go through all of that. I can, if you want me to. But we have offsetting revenues from East West Gateway for all of them, but Deer Road, I believe it is. And we have county funds coming from, for all of them, for the most part, too. So we have a lot of offsetting revenues to help our SRIF budget at the same time. So we do have $100,000 in there for some bridge maintenance. We do that on a every-other-year setup. And we actually did the construction of one of them earlier this year, which we did for TR Hughes Bridge, and did some rehab at the end vents for that. And then just next year, we're going to look at doing some minor repairs on the Guthrie Road Bridge to stay ahead of some things so it doesn't get to a mission-critical thing. That's most of the, that's the projects that we showed in the budget. Any questions on those specifically?
Councilmember Taylor?
What did you say? I couldn't find the traffic calming amount?
Traffic calming is $57,500. It's about, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8 down, traffic calming? Yep.
And that's for those dips, right? That's?
Yeah.
How much are each of those cost?
Yeah, so generally, a dip will go in. This year, this year, we put in a raised median also with that. So we look at different options. Generally, the dip is what occurs, because that's the thing that's more palatable to more people. So it could be a mix of things, but the dips, I think we, I don't remember what we spent exactly on those. Do you remember?
On Turtle Creek, we put in two dips and one raised median, and that was about the $57,000. That was right at that number. That was the only we could do with that year. That was the only we could do with that year. And that also was put in with the concrete program. So it was a little better price because the crew was already there doing the work. So as opposed to having him mobilized to go do traffic calming, specifically just to do traffic calming.
Any other questions? Good? Okay. Thank you. Next item?
If you'd like, I could hit the, how about the project management general fund?
Yes.
Okay. This starts on page 76. So really, this is the portion of the project managers that are assigned, kind of allocated to the general fund budget. So every year, based on what's budgeted for 2026 projects, developments, we take a look at the workload, where our staffing is going to be. If we have different parks projects or if we're helping Sewer and Water or in this case, the Castle project, we'll allocate a portion of in the Castle project, Chris's time or whatever staff's going to be working on that. So you'll see from year to year, our salary percentages change based on how many projects we have going and the type of projects. So that's kind of the fluctuation. We do our best to determine who's going to be where. Again, things pop up, hey, we need you to do this or we need you to do that. So but at the time of the budget, we do the best we can to allocate the staff towards the proper accounts. So in this case, this is the funds from the project managers portion that goes to the general fund. So it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any questions on project management? Okay. Did you cover engineering?
Engineering is next. And if I can, I'll turn that over to Todd. Engineering is our plan reviewers that take the time to review the plans that come in and then as well as our construction inspection group that again is assigned to those developments to go out there and inspect commercial and residential developments.
And just to clarify, we don't have any design engineers on staff, correct?
We do not. You would have, you know, obviously you have survey, you have hydraulics, you have a number of different disciplines that would have to be.
In fact, we don't even carry errors and omissions insurance.
We don't, no. We don't have a lot of the software.
We couldn't design if we wanted to.
Correct.
Just checking. Sorry, go ahead.
Or the necessary software CAD technicians to actually produce a set of plans goes on that, too, which would.
That's true. That's about $5,000 a copy.
Yeah. Thank you. The 2026 engineering operating budget is very similar to the 2025. I'm just going to highlight a few of the ones where the percentages have changed. Went down, which is the office supplies, kind of telephone and furniture fixtures. Basically, some of the easels, TVs and the light that was purchased in 2025 is already bought, so it's not in the 2026 budget. The one significantly percentage that went up was travel and training. And that is not that much different than 2025. The percentage is a little off, but as Wade mentioned, with the staffing changes and new personnel and new positions and the workload balance, has not been as much time for the travel and training that we would like to. So we hope to anticipate in 2026, we'll be able to get, to go and do the training that we require for the construction inspectors and the reviewers and staff. So.
Okay, that was easy. Any questions on engineering? Okay, moving on to facilities maintenance. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hey, you let Chris speak. I was impressed.
Thank you again for allowing us to present. Real quick, I'd just like to introduce my team, my division heads that are here this evening that will be presenting to you. Our maintenance manager, Mike Leonard, will be presenting on the facility. Landscape superintendent, Bob Dirdoff, will be presenting on the landscape. And Jeremy Wolfmeyer, our park superintendent, will be presenting on the parks and the public venue, which is also known as the stadium fund. And Donna Pinkston, our office manager, kind of helps put all this together. So she'll be here to answer all the questions.
Going to go over some accomplishments. Over at the senior center, we redid the bathrooms, which turned out amazing. We also finished the LED changeout in the dining room area, turned out really well as well. City Hall, we replaced the fence out front. Renovate Center, we had a new boiler put in for domestic hot water and some window blinds. As far as goals for next year, we'd like to upgrade the east entry to ADA, today's ADA standards. Central core elevators, update both of those. Those have been obsolete for quite a while and we're not able to get parts for it. And then at the senior center, we'd like to replace the carpeting. Going into operating, everything was cut except for routine repair maintenance, and that is because we need to start changing out some of the mortars locks here. They're starting to fail. They're obsolete as well, so we have to buy new ones and those are not cheap. And then we're going to continue our LED exit sign and emergency sign changeout. And then going over to CIPs. Again, the elevators, continued to tuck pointing, ADA improvements and some windows up on second floor in the office center. Any questions?
Any questions for Mike? I think you're safe, Mike. Landscaping?
Good evening, council members. Thank you for listening to my recommendations, starting with probably a slideshow. Guys in the back are still on facilities. Oh, you got it. I thought you were handling it. So landscape division, we put new baskets on Main Street this year and we were thrilled with how well they turned out. There was a little skepticism maybe when we started, not knowing how well these would handle our weather, but they have been great. And we put them at the Veterans Walk also. Those are actually on the Veterans Walk irrigation system, so we don't go there with the water truck. These have been fantastic and I can't wait to do the rest of Main Street with these, this style of baskets. And I think I asked everybody if they knew any other municipalities that were using these. Has anybody seen anyone using these? Good, we're the first and the only. That's where I like to be. One other accomplishment we had this year was we replaced the chain link fence on Tom Ginever. My team went in and stripped the fabric off and pulled everything to the recycle dumpster. And then the contractor came in and put new fabric on the top rail and the post. It went really well. We coordinated with residents. They were informed the entire time. We really had no complaints other than they wanted, one gentleman called, he wanted some weeds taken care of that were in our area, viney weeds. But we took care of that. Everybody's happy. No dogs got out. Another accomplishment, this is a photograph from today. This was taken at about 10 o'clock this morning. This is the roundabout. Tim Snyder on the left, Jeremy's in the photograph with them. They put the art on the pad, bolted it down. There's the artist on the left. Napoli, what's his first name? Fred. Fred Napoli. And his wife came along with him. Some of my team members on the right, we were doing the planting while Tim's guys were doing the artwork. And then we got sod on the ground and the irrigation's running. You can see it on the right side there at the bottom, the arts done, the plants are in. We were about to pull off. Mike Snowden came down at about that time. He was as happy as I've ever seen him, so. Really worked out great today. Had a great day. So challenges, we got, here's Austin watering. We are watering things we've never thought we would ever water. Can we get some rain? I haven't heard anybody else in the room talk about this, but we keep hitting Bill to do the next slide. I did this slide presentation and I thought, just really, what are we doing? And it turns out tractor trailer that brings fuel to the gas station holds 6,500 gallons and we have been doing that every day, 6,500 gallons since about Labor Day. We are really moving water and we even put trash cans in the bed of trucks and then use a small water pump to pump it out. And the guys are just making these round trips. And back in 2012, we lost plants because we didn't have this capability that we have now. We lost $38,000 worth of plants in 2012. It was a really dry year. So hopefully, we get out from under this Saturday and we can ease up and focus on some other things. So we've been doing all this watering at the same time we're doing the roundabout. So it's been, it's been quite a lot. I have no increases for the landscape division budget. We're going to ride along just like we have been.
Good. Councilmember Rexdale?
Thank you. I'm just curious, materials, how come you're not budgeting anything in materials for this year?
So materials is a line item that Vicki put in our budget for the roundabout project. And that won't be back in our budget again. It's a one-year expense.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
Recreation Fund, Parks Division?
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Wolfmeyer. As Bill said, I'm the park superintendent, so thanks for having me. City vote found council and pro temp. Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and get started here. Some of our accomplishments, at first, when I started putting the slideshow together, this was actually crammed in with the slide before because I was told I had three slides, but they gave me four, so I'm pretty excited about that. In April, the Daughters of the American Revolution dedicated two special markers over at Fort Zumalt Park. I worked real closely with two ladies, Lori and I can't remember, and Kathy. And they were great. And I didn't realize how big of an event it was going to be. We had really good attendance that day. A lot of Zumalt descendants showed up to kind of check everything out and it was, it was really cool. So anyway, we have a Patriots marker at the Healed Home and a Pomeroy Foundation marker at Zumalt's fort. So that was a real special day for me and just, and for the community, of course. Some improvements, some of our accomplishments. Dame's Park is in the process right now of getting a new playground that you all approved last year, as well as a new safety surface. So that's coming along real nice. The other thing that I'm super excited about that we've gotten is new lights at Ozzie Smith's Sports Complex. So Tony's crew was able to come fly the drone for us to get some of this footage. The photo on the left is our old lighting. And you can see it's still lit real well, but if you start looking in the upper right corner of that left picture, those houses are lit up from our ball field lights. And if you look at the new picture on the right with the new directed LED light bulbs, those houses are happy. They called me when we had one more poll to do before 4th of July. When are you doing that poll? I'm like, it's been like that for 20 years. But I love to talk about these LED lights, so I just let them know, yeah, as soon as 4th of July is over, as long as it doesn't rain, we'll be getting that other poll done. And they did. And so if you haven't heard about it, I'm disappointed from the residents because that's awesome. They are happy. We got, we did get a lot of compliments from CarShield because we did a similar lighting upgrade over there and that made a big difference as well. The other good thing about the LEDs is we can program them from an app. Recreation does that, so we're more efficient with our light schedule when they come on and that they're going off appropriately. FMX, Mike Leonard kind of introduced this along with Bill last year for a work order system. And I started to get intrigued. I would use it from the user side to ask Mike to make some repairs. So we started incorporating it into parks. So I have this dashboard that you see there. It's still a work in process. It's missing Ozzie right now and I'm working with the vendor on that. But this is something I can pull up and just look at however I want to do it, a week, a month, and just see how things are, how mowing looks, how routine cleaning looks, different things like that. So just at a glance, I can keep up on that. We're also introducing all of our parks equipment into this facility maintenance program so that our staff, instead of shooting an email or text, hey, my mower's acting up, it's doing this, and then the email gets lost or text is forgotten about, it'll be in this program and then we can make sure equipment is getting fixed appropriately and on time and kind of keep a history of that. Another project that I'm super proud of is Civic Park Bandstand Pavilion. It, obviously, looking at there on the left, and I wish I could zoom in and show you all the squirrel holes and all the different things going on there. But wow, what a difference the construction team made. That was all done in-house. Facility maintenance also helped with all new electric and staining. But this was a complete parks and facilities project that was done. So I think that's super cool, especially when Jammin's going on and everybody's looking right at that. So. All right, 2026 goals. This has been talked about quite a bit already tonight. We have installation of artificial turf. So everybody knows that project kicks off on October 27th. So we've already talked with communications about starting to get word out on social media just so we're informing residents. Worked closely with REC to make sure we end field reservations and have that ready to go. So fields A and B will be full synthetic turf, so in and outfields, full synthetic turf. And then C and D, E, F and G, those will be in fields only for synthetic turf. So we'll sub natural grass in the outfields on those fields. So again, kicks off October 27th. We're hoping mid-April. I think it's guaranteed to start raining as soon as we kick this project off. That's kind of what we're thinking. We need the rain, but not that bad. All right, so I'm going to get into my budget here a little bit. So overall, with wages and benefits, I'm up like a little bit under 1% in the overall budget. Some of the things that are big decreases is like grass seed and chemicals. This is something that kind of increased quite a bit 2020, 2021, when we were having trouble getting chemicals, getting them shipped into us, things like that. So that's a number I asked staff to take a hard look at and start to reduce that. Also, like Bob said, we just haven't had the rain. So I did ask the guys not to throw seed in un-irrigated. When we overseeded this year, we didn't do much seeding in the non-irrigated areas because I just didn't want to waste the material. So we still have that to use next year. So that's kind of why we did that. Some of the other lines that jump out, REC supplies is quite a bit lower. A lot of that was just a matter of some years we put barbecue grills in and we did that last year. We had to replace those, so I didn't budget those again. We were a little behind on like net repairs. You wouldn't think net repairs are much, but when you have pickleball, basketball, hockey and multiple parks that have that, tennis, that we got a little bit behind, so we had to increase that for 2025, but decreased it back to a more manageable level in 2026. My seasonal wages are down about 5%. I just kind of look at the history and where we've been in the past years. And I also kind of try and factor in vacations and if we don't get staff exactly when we want to. So again, just an educated guess, educated decision on that. With that, I'll get into CIP unless anybody has any questions about the operating.
Any questions so far? Councilmember Cook?
Not really a question, but on the, the new pavilion looks great at the park. Looks fantastic. We have such a huge turnout anymore. Is there any way we could enlarge our little dance area, the little concrete area? I mean, people, it's, we're having great turnout, which is wonderful.
Sure.
But a lot of people are dancing on the grass. It's a little bit more of a safety issue, but just curious.
The only thing I wish is I would have thought of it first, but yeah, let me, let me look into that a little bit. We've kind of started doing that with some of our barbecue grill areas, so of course it makes sense for a dance, dance area. So let Bill and I kind of discuss maybe appropriate size and get some feedback and kind of go from there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, continue, sir.
All right. All right, so CIP, we have the public works building. Our portion of that is still in the CIP. Playground safety surface, we have $70,000 there. 10,000 of that is to do a repair at O'Day Park on the synthetic turf in the playgrounds, the hillside. The kids use that as kind of a sledding area with cardboard and different things in it. It takes some wear, so it's, it's pretty expected to be replaced. And then also to replace the safety surface. And then also, to replace the safety surface in the front of the park, the second playground in Dames Park by, by the corporate pavilion. And then, of course, we need to reseal roadway and parking lots in Westoff Park. So we kind of divide everything up. So this is the west side of the park, kind of from Brendan's Park at the Y towards tennis and towards Diamond One. Soccer goal replacement, our soccer goals are over 17 years old at Sports Park. So it's just, it's time, it's time to, to get new ones. The nice thing about the new ones, too, they'll be more portable and allow us to move the goals around to help the turf last longer. Because if you put a goal, they're all going to kick in front of the goal and wear it out real fast. And if we can move that target around, that helps keep the turf in better shape. So that's an expense you'll see. We have stretched that out for six years to slowly start replacing those, just to help with budget constraints and things like that. Playground replacement is also in the budget at Dames Park in the front of the park, the first loop. It doesn't make sense to me to replace the surface and then keep that old playground that's 20 years old there for another 10 to 15 before I would replace the surface again. So I'm trying to line the timing up with how old the playground is and what it, what it needs right now, and making sure we're not great surface. And in 15, 10 years, we're like, oh my gosh, that playground's very outdated, okay? Or they start giving it, making parts for them. We have temporary fencing for the athletic fields. That is for Ozzie. That is to kind of, to handle all the different tournaments that Dalton's going to bring in, mainly for ladies softball. But those are a need that we get, we get, we get, right now, we're probably getting two to three requests a year. We're hoping to grow that more. And then, of course, fiber in the parks. This is something we've worked closely with IT on. This is to get fiber into Dames, Ozzie, Sports Park, and Westoff Park. So that'll be a good improvement. I know this past summer, we had a really large weekday softball tournament, and the internet was, was just not, not up all the time. It kept going down and was really hurting our sales and concessions and things like that. So this would help eliminate those issues. And Sports Park has zero network into that park. So that'll help for expansion for security cameras, security door locks, things like And then that leads into security cameras. We have in the budget to do some security cameras at Sports Park next year after the fiber install. And then Westoff Park three-plex renovation. This is a, going to be a pretty big project for us that we're going to take on in-house. I don't know that we'll get it all completed next year, but with the turf project at Ozzie, we're getting a lot of dirt, a lot of fill dirt from there, and that gives us an opportunity to use that dirt, free dirt, to kind of build this area. So the three, the fields five, six, and seven right now in Westoff Park are pretty rundown. Backstops are in poor shape. We have a chat sidewalk, so not very ADA accessible out to it. So we're wanting to get concrete sidewalks out to it and make a nicer, nicer three-plex and better and more, more playable for our residents. Okay? Utility vehicle, that is those gators that you see running around during Heritage and Freedom Fest. We generally get about 2,500 to 3,000 hours on those. Usually ends up being around 10 years when we, we have to replace those. So it's not an increase, that's a replacement. Same thing goes with the zero-turn mowers, that is a replacement. And then lastly, for the CIP in parks is two F-350s. That is 314, I'm sorry, it's three, 314, 350, and 362. Those trucks get, are the trucks that get used for snowplow, whether it be for us in the parks or with streets. We keep three of those sized trucks back for, for parks and facilities when we remove snow, but they are definitely showing their age. We have one that we're trying to limp by right now that we have parked and is only going to be used for snow. So it's, with, with Jason's help, it's definitely time to get those replaced. Any questions on parks capital?
Any questions? All right.
All right, we'll go right into public venue. Public venue is, is pretty, pretty simple budget for us. We do have an increase in full-time wages. That is done off of a time study we do. Each employee, every day fills out what they did that day and where they did it at. And that's between facility maintenance and parks that, that handle those wages. So it just depends on what the project might be. This year, our construction team did a lot of full-depth repair before we had a contractor come in and do the parking lot overlay on the west side of TRU's Boulevard. So that saved us a lot of money by us doing that, but it also increased our hours that were done at the stadium. Another increase is technology systems. That's just because we're getting fiber into that park as well. Any questions about operating for public venue?
Questions? Well, sounds like good, Jeremy.
Okay, and then CIP. All right, so we have parking lot maintenance. We're just going to continue with the asphalt overlay on the west side of TRU's Boulevard. We are wanting to add seven security cameras also, as well as bleacher and deck shoring. Underneath the decking currently is eroding in some areas that we need to get in there and fix, so that's what that is for. Any questions about capital?
Questions? You're on a roll, Jeremy.
That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to transient guest tax. Thanks, Bill.
Transient guest tax, that is the 5% we collect on the hotel stays for the hotels located within the city limits. Right now, the revenues are about flat. I know we have new hotels coming in, but until they're here and we know how much they're bringing in, we don't project it to go up right now. Expense-wise, 2025, spent a lot of money on the theater and the O'Fallon Theater Works, redoing the gym area and stage extension and all that. Hopefully, Jennifer might be able to give you an update on that as far as when that will get completed, if it'll roll over, if we should be able to get most of it encumbered this year. Next year's expenses, the increases that you'll see in the operating part mainly is going to be the marketing advisor that we're looking at to, to get. And then the capital projects are the completion of the Healed Home tuck pointing and this US Space Force, how it gets incorporated into the veterans.
All right. Thanks, Kelly. Jennifer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I am going to go ahead and jump in to tourism and festivals in relations to recreation. So some of our accomplishments are noted this year for our Heritage and Freedom Fest Parade. It was very exciting to see that the number of participants this year were right on par with what we would normally have on a political year. So that was exciting to see, and the incorporation of some new pieces such as the balloons that went down Main Street. We also had an increase in attendance in O'Fallon Theater Works. We are seeing a very positive trend with that right now, and excited to say that we did have three of the six shows for Six the Musical actually sell out. So that was very, very exciting to see, and it was a phenomenal piece that was put on. So this year, we also began a program, kind of dipping our toe in the water with the Healed Home and trying to see what we can do in regards to the tours that take place there and getting a bit more educational pieces in there. And that was created as Homestead Days at Fort Zumalt Park. And so that was an opportunity where people would come in and as part of the tour that day, there may be a hands-on activity for them to work with. So I know Mariah worked with like the MU extension, and then also, you know, there might be topics such as canning or a variety of different types of topics that would be taking place back in that timeframe to make sure people are still aware of that and moving that forward. Just last week, I believe it was, I've lost a week already, that we had our food truck Fright that was out in Dames Park. That was a huge hit. We did twist it up this year and create that as a food truck fright and film. So we did end up showing the movie Coco on the football field, and people absolutely loved it. People came out dressed, the parents, just dates, the dogs, the kids. Everybody was dressed up. We had characters that were out there. So the whole, the whole thing was very immersive in what was going on, and people are really, really enjoying that piece. And even the music with the DJ, for those who didn't want to watch, also dancing, Elsa dancing. So it was a very, very positive experience. So people are liking that new little twist on things. And then also, with the Healed Home, piggybacking on the Homestead Days, we are seeing an increase in people who are coming and including our field trips, and that is something that we are looking at enhancing for next year is for one of our, for one of our goals. So, so I'm going to hold that for Danielle. But at this point, I was just going to go ahead and jump into my budget. Honestly, it's, it's pretty low-key as far as any significant changes. There's a few pieces of an increase, and it's more so related to bids because those pricing is, is going up. I am having to go out for production and fireworks and some significant pieces. And also, as far as in special events, we are going to be doing those Homestead Days. We're looking to potentially even make that registration a ticketed event, so we need to make sure that we're able to cover those fees as well. Festivals went down just slightly because we did remove an event that was a ticketed event, and that, and that took away a lot of our fees that we would normally occur. But we were very fortunate with fireworks this year. I just got the bid back, and so that actually is not going to be as high as I expected. However, we still are dealing with tariffs when it comes to fireworks and also, what's the word I'm looking for? Christmas lights, that, that holiday, that's what's next. So in a nutshell, those are kind of the key pieces of our budget where you may see some fluctuation up and down. Otherwise, it's pretty, pretty boring, and I'm okay with that. So as far as capital improvement, we are looking to work and get some storage units for Celebration of Lights. We are in desperate need of space. We are able to coordinate with parks to get this done in January of next year. And so it's very hard to be able to work inside of the, of the shed to get everything set up and ready when there's so many things in there. So we're going to look to kind of create some additional space, and we need to work with parks to be able to expand a little section of a drive area for that. The next piece would be for Celebration of Lights once again, the front gate entrance, that very first focal piece that you walk, you know, drive in through. That has not been replaced in, since I was doing that, and that was before 2018. And so, and that was a piece that was made by a volunteer, an engineer of ours that would always volunteer. He did a great job. It's just really starting to show its wear. So we would like to go and invest in more of a commercial grade so we can go ahead and keep that structure looking nice. The park has been brought up to an amazing standard, and we need to make sure that the first peak, as people are going through it, have that standard as well. So, and as far as the dance floor comment, it's already on my board for 2027. So noted. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I made a mistake, Kelly. I let you off without asking if there were any questions. So if anyone has any questions for Kelly or Jennifer. Councilmember Ragsdale.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I know we've talked about it before. I loved the balloons during the parade, so I just want to tell you again how much I really enjoyed having those there. That was a good addition.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Taylor.
I went to the Fright Food Night.
Yes.
And it was packed, like food trucks. They were telling me they were running out of supplies and food and everything.
It was a great turnout.
We get pretty good sales tax from that, food trucks or?
That is the responsibility of, what we get from them is a vendor application fee. And so it's up to them to report their taxes and any sort of health permits that are required by the county. So we provide a list of all of the trucks that we work with or anybody who's doing any sorts of sales. And so they know that they need to report that, but we'll give the county a list of all of the trucks that are participating with food to make sure that we have that health permit. Yes. But they do have to register with the city for the application, the $50 application. Is that what it's?
Yeah, when they, when they apply for the food truck permit, then we request a copy of their retail sales tax license to ensure that they are paying retail sales tax, right?
Yeah, so that's a side that I don't particularly see.
Fair enough. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jennifer. And moving on to Recreation Fund. Is that going to be you, Craig, or?
No, nobody wants to hear me. Yeah, everybody knows Jennifer. I want to make sure Danielle Rex, she's Recreation Superintendent. And then over here, I have Kristen Thunderberg. She does a lot of the marketing, well, all the marketing, and venues and also concessions. So she's here to answer those questions.
Excellent.
Okay, well, we will start with some highlights from the Recreation Division. Sponsorship revenue increased significantly, and we owe that to this lady right over here for all of her hard work. Cash partnerships were $75,000 plus, and in-kind donations were $30,000 plus. So that significantly helps our department in a lot of ways, so we are very thankful for her for that. Swim team enrollment and private lesson revenue are both trending upward, which we really like to see. The new lighting at Ozzie that Jeremy was talking about, I think the residents are very happy about that, but also our staff is also extremely happy about that. Jeremy mentioned there's an app that we can use to schedule the lights. Kristen was having to ensure her team was scheduling staff to be out there to make sure lights got turned on and off, and we don't have to worry about that at Ozzie anymore. So that has significantly helped, and if there's a hiccup, we can easily turn something on from our phone now. So I'm very excited about that. One of the biggest things I've been excited about is a partnership that we did with Pedal Kids USA. They came out and did a bicycle camp at Sports Park, and it was pretty awesome to see my, my daughter participated in it, and she was a brand-new bike user. But was, what was really cool is her level of confidence significantly increased over that week. What was even cooler was at the beginning of the week, there were kids there that had not ridden a bicycle at all. And by Wednesday, so three days in, them spending about an hour and a half each day, there were kids riding bicycles. And that was like mind-blowing for me to see, especially since I had been struggling very hardcore to get my child to ride a bike. So that was really, that was a really cool partnership. It was very cool to see. And then one of the other awesome highlights we have is we switched our clearinghouse for credit cards from ETS to Paytrack with Finances Blessing. That software has drastically reduced transaction issues that we were having. We were seeing significant issues. It was becoming a hassle both on staff sides and patron sides, and that has basically gone down to zero. I do want to thank IT and Finance because they significantly helped us to ensure that that project ran smoothly. that project ran smoothly. Um, so what's coming up? We have, um, been accepted as a partner in the New Horizons Youth Baseball and Softball League, which is very exciting. And I'll talk when we start going down the lines, um, that we are going to be doing a baseball league. So, that's very exciting. Um, we are currently working on a check-in process at the Renaud Center, um, to kind of further evaluate those fitness classes and seeing who's checking in for what. We are always looking to do new adult programs. Um, we're constantly being innovative in that area, so we've got some new options on the horizon we're excited about. Uh, we've expanded our concessions and birthday party offerings. And then, um, another really exciting one is we are working to put together a flag football program in collaboration with NFL Flag. Some of the challenges that we have had is just full-time staff over, staff turnover. We've had six rec specialists and two recreation assistants hired. Um, we are almost back up to fully staff, which will be nice. Uh, aging facilities, which has increased our operational and supply costs. Uh, Renaud's Center is on her 21st year and she, we're seeing some of the, the wear and tear. Um, balancing the gymnasium usage to support all of the groups that we have in our gym. Uh, we have two full-court basketball courts and, uh, we, we jam-pack that area. So, we're constantly renting or trying to figure out how to squeeze more usage out of that space. And then, um, another challenge has been just recruiting instructors, especially for our youth enrichment classes. So, if you don't have any questions, I'll jump in and start with our recreation budget and I'll do revenue, then expenses, and then CIPs, and I'll give time for questions in between.
Any questions so far?
Nope.
I think you're good.
Okay, um, so just looking at our recreation revenue, um, the first line I wanted to point out is camps. You're gonna see a loss in revenue and that is really due to just last-minute cancellations that have been occurring, that coincide with our current cancellation policy that we have. So, we are actually looking to change that policy moving forward and hopefully that will kind of alleviate some of those last-minute cancellations. It's hard for us to go back and fill those spots when we only require two weeks out. Most people have found, um, other camps or other things for, for their kids to do. Um, the next line I wanted to point out was 4479, it's our T-ball. And like I mentioned, you're gonna see a drastic increase in that line and that's because we're adding that baseball program in. Currently, we have T-ball and coach pitch that serves four to seven-year-olds. Um, the, adding the baseball in will be eight and up that we'll add. And then, the last line for Recreation Revenue I wanted to point out is 4482, it's the line directly under that for football. And you'll see that's been at zero for a while. We actually asked Finance to add that line back in because we're working on developing that flag football program and we're really excited about that opportunity, so. Any questions about revenue? I did that good? Okay. All right, moving on to Recreation Expenses. First line I wanted to point out to you is 5020, it's our wages for part-time employees. We are doing an 85 cent increase. Um, that's gonna put us 25 cents over minimum wage. Um, and then, just as a side note, I wanted to mention, um, Vicky asked me to mention that due to the minimum wage law, we will propose this going into effect on December 13th, so that's gonna be on the November consent calendar, yes? Yeah. So, that will be on the November consent calendar. Um, being at that level above the minimum wages helps us to ensure that we're still being competitive. It's very hard to get part-time staff. Um, there were years where we were really struggling with it and, um, we've had a good year and a half, two years, and we want to continue that trend. Um, the next line I wanted to point out is all the way down at the bottom and really just calling this out again, because we've already kind of talked about it, but it's 6019 T-ball. Again, you're seeing that big, large increase. That's just because we're having to purchase the equipment for that baseball program that we don't currently have. So, that's why you're seeing that large increase. Um, and then, the line directly below it, um, with swim team revenues, and I kind of talked about this when we were, uh, going over our highlights, but our swim team has been doing really well. Um, but we're constantly going back and looking at our budget and making sure that those expenses and those part-time revenues coincide, um, the, sorry, the expenses and the staffing wages coincide with those revenues. And what we are catching is we needed to probably adjust our expenses a little bit to make sure, um, we were still bringing in a good profit margin. So, you're gonna see those expenses for 2026 go down, um, but that's just because we're trying to be conservative with that line and what we're spending on and make sure we're being responsible. Any questions about the expenses?
Questions, comments? Wow.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, I like this. Um, all right, so going into CIPs, um, the first CIP you're gonna see is the sandblast and paint of the leisure pool. Um, we do this, um, on a rotation with our pools every couple of years. So, our leisure pool is in desperate need of this. It's, um, got a lot of cracking and we have been patching that, but in order to ensure that we keep the integrity of that pool, we want to make sure that that is, uh, re-coated and painted and looking fresh. So, that's our first CIP. The next CIP we have is our enclosed trailer. Um, that will be used for concessions in office and in a warming space. Uh, so this actually is gonna help reduce some of the costs that we have, um, for COL and HFF when we need like an office space. Uh, but it's also gonna give us potential, potentially more opportunity for revenue sources, so we're very excited about that. And then, um, the next item that we have is our ADA lift. Uh, we have lifts at each of the locations at our pool. Um, and the one that is at our leisure is a hydraulic lift and it's corroding and is in constant need of repairs. Um, so our maintenance team basically came back to us and said it's on its last leg, we need to consider something. Um, so, we're looking to replace that and put in a mobile, um, unit and the mobile unit will ensure that we can bring it inside in the off-season months and that will, um, increase the longevity of it as well. So, we're trying to be responsible with that. And then, the last, um, CIP we have for Recreation is our diving board. Uh, the current diving board at Alligators Creek is worn and corroding and, um, we did reach out to see if it could be resurfaced, but unfortunately, it doesn't meet the requirements to be resurfaced, so the recommendation was that we replace it. So, we're looking at about $8,000 to replace that. Are there any questions about any of the CIPs?
Questions, comments?
I must be doing something right, I guess.
Must be, that or it's getting late.
Yeah, everybody's like, just hurry up, Danielle, I'm talking. Okay, I'll jump right into our revenue for Renaud Center. Um, first line I'll point out is 4460, that is our annual passes line. Um, we have maintained and been very consistent in that line, which is awesome. We still are seeing small, it's about, it's about a 3% increase we're seeing year-over-year. So, we're still seeing, um, increases in that line, but what we're really happy about is just maintaining that consist, consistency of it. Um, the next line I wanted to point out was 4470, uh, that's our youth classes line. And I had mentioned before, it's very hard to find those instructors for those youth enrichment classes. So, our, uh, staff have really been looking at different ways to accommodate that and we'll be bringing in mini-camps as an option. It doesn't require a specific instructor, but it's gonna provide some, um, different revenue generating opportunities. And then, the last line I wanted to point out was 4488, our concessions line. Um, Kristen and her team have been killing it. We have offered new products in our concession cooler and concession stands. Some of our staff are very happy about the energy drinks that we have had. Um, but we've also made some price adjustments to make sure that we are, um, meeting what we need to meet. So, um, that line is doing great. Are there any questions about revenues?
Questions, comments? Okay.
Okay, all right, going on to, um, Renaud expenses. Um, real quick, just pointing out 5020, that part-time wages, again, it's the same thing as 220. We're doing an 85 cent increase, that's just so that we can, uh, remain competitive. Again, you guys will see that on your consent calendar in November. Um, I wanted to also point out 5561, our birthday party concessions. Um, that's been doing really, really well and I just wanted to highlight on that line. Staff have done a really good job of mixing things up, ensuring that we are offering themes that are catchy. Um, the cakes are really cute, so, uh, I think we offer a really good product and kids get to swim, which is the most exciting part. And then, last line I wanted to point out was 6015, our swim lessons. Um, we are introducing a new program because our swim team was doing so well, we wanted to continue with that momentum. And we are, are offering a Torpedoes New Wave program and we actually are piloting it right now and it's doing really, really well. Um, so we're excited to see that, but they are requesting some new equipment, um, such as a pace clock and some other things, just to, um, have that for the program. So, that's kind of where you will see a little bit of a difference in that line. Are there any questions about 540 expenses?
Questions, comments? Doing good?
You can ask me a question, I will not cry, I promise. I will, it'll be okay. Um, okay, moving on to our Renaud CIPs then. The first one you're gonna see is gonna say LED gym lights, that's wrong. Um, it should say duck work for the Dektron, so I just wanted to preface that with, um, I think, are you guys giving them a new copy of that form?
Yeah, the narrative says duck work, that's correct.
Yes.
The capital form that was attached was not.
Correct.
And you got a new one in your packet.
Perfect, okay. Um, so that duck work Dektron repair, um, the Dektron is the, um, it's like the HVAC system for our nettorium and we have put a bunch of band-aids on that and our maintenance crew is requesting that we get that repaired next year. So, that's, that's needed in order to make sure that that's operating well. Um, another CIP that we have is our track resurfacing. Uh, that track is original, so it's from 2004 and, uh, it was funny, Craig and I actually walked on the track the other day. Um, we were in the middle lane, um, obstructing people from their walk, but, um, we really wanted to analyze and look at that track and you, you're starting to see cracking and it's just necessary that we get on top of that before it gets worse because if the, that cracking gets worse, then we'll have to close down that track and people won't be able to walk. So, um, looking to do that next year. And then, each year, we, uh, purchase cardio equipment. Uh, that's about a fourth of the cardio equipment that we purchase each year. And that's just, just to ensure that we are staying on top and having functioning equipment. Staff really look and analyze to make sure they're choosing pieces, um, that have a lot of mileage and wear on them and make sure we're rotating those out and consistently having equipment that's usable. And then, the last item is the security camera replacements, which I'll blame Jason for that one. Um, we're needing to install new cameras and, um, replace the existing system that we have, so you'll see 35,000 in there for that.
It's for the kids.
It's for the kids.
I want to catch the kids.
Catch the kids. Any questions? Oh, I got a question!
Councilmember Ragsdale.
And I'm sorry, this actually goes back to, I didn't have my question ready the last time you asked for a question, so I want to go back. Um, youth classes, the income, it looks like you're looking at increasing almost 40%. So, I would think if we're increasing revenue by 40%, we should also be increasing, um, the expense by around about the same amount, but it looks like the expense is actually going down. So, how come for youth, we're increasing and for expense, decreasing?
So, one of the things we're doing for those youth classes is the mini-camps. Um, the overall expenses aren't too high on that. Um, it's gonna be an opportunity for, the staffing costs are going to be probably more than the actual expenses. We're able to run those classes pretty low-cost. Um, the mini-camp will be a lot more of them playing games with staff in the gym, uh, and then giving them the opportunity to go swimming, so that's why you're seeing that difference.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions, comments? You almost had a perfect record.
You guys made that so easy for me, thank you. You know, I wanted, I like a question, so thank you, Linda, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you.
That brings us to Information Technologies and Jason Adams. It's gonna be hard to, hard act to follow with only one question.
Well, I was actually gonna make a request of the council and Craig to transfer Danielle to the IT department because I feel that her services would be very well worth it. Oh, she's gone. Oh. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm gonna start with the accomplishments, which I need the, the thing for. I couldn't list all the accomplishments that we have accomplished this year. We have been a very, very busy department. We are a department of eight, but here are some of the main highlights. Earlier this year, we made the transition from our traditional phone service to SIP, which effectively is making phone calls over the internet. Um, it lowered our monthly cost, um, from what we were paying before and it also added additional redundancy because we could split that phone service between two sites. So, if City Hall, for example, lost power, all of the phone service would go over to the Justice Center, so other sites wouldn't suffer. So, that was a huge thing for us. We, um, have been working very closely with Steve Bender's, um, department with operational technology. IT and operational technology, um, for, uh, before multiple years ago, was seen as something completely separate, that they each did their own thing. And we found out a couple of years ago that that is not the way that it should be. Both sides should be talking with each other. But with the IT department not able to speak wastewater language and wastewater not being able to speak IT language, what we did, um, was bring in a skater expert from, um, another city that shall not be named. And, um, he has been doing phenomenal work, um, at both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. And he's also kind of our middleman. So, if you remember watching the movie Office Space, when the one guy said, "I go from the customer to the engineers," and like, he is the perfect example of that. He's able to kind of convey everything and he's involved in cybersecurity training and is able to disseminate all of the important information to all of the operators at both plants. Teams calling was something that I thought was gonna be a very easy and straightforward thing to pull off at the beginning of the year. It was there to facilitate the working from, or the work-from-home project that instead of staff having to forward their phone calls from their desk phone to a cellphone and maybe feel uncomfortable with calling back residents from their cellphone and revealing their cellphone number, they would be able to make and receive phone calls using Microsoft Teams. We hired a consultant, um, that kind of connects all the dots together and we are now on some kind of escalation I didn't know existed at Microsoft, that we have a supervisor, supervisor, supervisor trying to assist us. We can receive calls, okay, in the test group, it's just not the making. So, I'm hoping, um, by the end of the year, it should be done, but we're almost there. Um, what day is it today? It's the 16th. As of two days ago, Microsoft ended security support for Windows 10. Luckily, we knew about this a year ago, so from that point to probably a couple of weeks ago, all of the computers that were not getting replaced this year, which had already been completed, we were able to upgrade every single one of them to Windows 11, with the exception of 16 that are either getting replaced next year or are used very seldom. And for those 16, we were able to purchase extended security life through Microsoft at a very low cost. So, that was a huge undertaking, it was an inconvenience for the staff that had to be without their computer for a while, but, but that was something that needed to be done and got done very well. For the new VPN method mentioned, I've always seen IT as not a hurdle for you to be able to do your jobs. We need to do things to keep you safe, we need to give you the technology to be able to do your jobs well, but if there's a hurdle in the way, um, it frustrates people. And we had version 1.0 of our VPN, which really wasn't that bad, it was just lots of clickings of buttons. We were able to move to not only, um, an easier and more intuitive VPN method, we were able to make it a lot more secure as well. So, we were able to kill two birds of one stones, uh, two birds of one stone and, um, we got some. some very good feedback just based on how easy it is to connect to the VPN. Cybersecurity training is something that we continue to work on. We found that if we're able to make it more engaging, if we're able to make the videos and the content shorter and more entertaining, and in a lot of cases funny, people actually want to take it. I know no one wants to take the cybersecurity training. I know you don't want to take the cybersecurity training, and I appreciate that you do. But by us able to make it to be something that people want to watch, it helps stick in their minds a little bit more, and assists with keeping the city safe and all of the data and all of the services. As Jeremy mentioned, we entered into a new fiber agreement a couple of months ago. We were on Everstream. They were bought out by Segra, and when Segra came in and gave us their sales pitch, we kind of leaned in and go, "Go on." And we were able to get a much better redundancy and performance, and a second internet exit point. Right now, everything comes through one building, so if that one building goes down, so does the rest of the internet. We can funnel the internet traffic wherever we want it to out of the second internet point, as well as the new construction for the new Public Works Building, Sports Park, and Jeremy also mentioned cameras as well. So very, very excited for that. And we have got an ETA of the end of this calendar year for the existing buildings, and the first couple of weeks of January for the new construction building. So we're getting pretty close to that. And then, for the iPhone fleet upgrade, we were on some pretty old phones. You all had the same phones that we did. We were able to enter into a very good agreement with T-Mobile for five years, a very good monthly cost. All of the phones that we received went from being of a couple of hundred dollars down to zero. So while I can't take credit for that, I do take credit for that. And we were able to give people a lot more use out of the phone. Face ID is something that people are used to using. It's quicker, the camera is better. So that was a huge undertaking as well. So many more things. We have a business systems project manager that's working with multiple departments, specifically financing, human resources, implementing the new HR/IS system, assisting finance with utility billing, and their new timekeeping software. So we've done a lot of big things this year, and I'd be remiss if I didn't call out the fact that this wouldn't be responsible without everyone within the department. So Joe Praba, Brian Rocket, Michael, and also Eric, who is actually watching this live. He's been texting me during the meeting, that his whole family's watching. So to Ellie, I would say, "It's past nine o'clock. You really need to be in bed." But a huge thank you to everyone, and also Amir, I forgot to mention him. Couldn't do this without them. For challenges, I mentioned last year that ongoing cybersecurity threats is never gonna leave this part of the slide. It's always gonna be here, but it's escalating. We're seeing more state-sponsored cybersecurity attacks. We are seeing AI going from something that's easily spotted to, "Is this real? Is this fake?" So we need to keep on it. And one of the ways that we're able to do that is by maintaining the good working relationships we have with our local, state, and federal partners. To put that into perspective, we got a personalized email from the FBI yesterday to someone in our department alerting us to a potential situation. We looked into it, found it credible, and we were able to act on it within the span of two hours. So it's only by maintaining those relationships that we're able to receive information in order to keep everyone safe. Federal funds and loss of federal services is affecting everyone. The council was gracious enough to allow us to purchase a five thousand dollar subscription to the multi-state information and analysis center to let us get as much analysis and blanking on the word, something that helps us keep everything going and keep us aware of the vulnerabilities. But with everything that's going on at the federal level, we're not sure of what information we're not getting. And a grant that we applied for in two thousand twenty-four that we would have typically found out the results for in January of this year, we still haven't heard a decision, and that comes from FEMA. So that loss of federal funds is why some of the costs are higher, especially with the security cameras where that would have been dedicated to, or allotted to. And we're also seeing an increase in a lot of services. One in particular that is, I wouldn't say causing me to lose sleep, but it's going to next year. One of the services that we went forward with about three years ago, sorry, two and a half years ago, was a cloud-based disaster recovery platform that allows us to back up our entire infrastructure. If we had a catastrophic event, if we got hit by ransomware, we could not only move everything back down after we rebuilt our infrastructure, but in the interim, we could run off in the cloud. So while people are at home VPN'ing in, they're actually VPN'ing into the cloud, and it's almost like nothing had ever changed. We paid a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a three-year license. It's going up to four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Holy!
And obviously, that's not viable. We're looking for another solution. But it's a service that we need, but it's at a price point that we just cannot afford. So that is a huge challenge for us. Looking to next year, a lot of our work relies around what's on the strategic plan. So ITIL training, as I mentioned at the retreat, is all about making sure that the services that we deliver are consistent and professional, no matter what we're doing. So a lot of that involves some training for various people in our department, making sure that they're aware of what our expectations are, and then integrating those services. We're planning on working very closely with the Parks and Recreation Departments to identify what areas of which parks they would like Wi-Fi, especially for scanning tickets and for concessions, taking credit cards and all that kind of stuff. We are investigating the use of AI, how it should be used, how it should not be used. And we are also completing the IT Business Continuity Program, as opposed to the Continuality Program. So obviously, AI can spot that spelling mistake, so I apologize for that. We are gonna be continuing a five-year refresh on our computers next year. We are also gonna be refreshing just a few iPads. The new disaster recovery service, I mentioned that we're looking into what could be a good replacement, but still giving us the same services but at a much lower price tag. The security camera installation, we have commandeered multiple unused offices right now with all the security cameras. It's like Christmas every day. We have a kickoff call on Monday, so the hope is that we're gonna start installing them towards the end of this year. And then, we're also gonna be looking into a new phone system for all of the desk phones. The one that we're using right now, it just looks like the nineteen nineties. It's that old. So we need something that's a little bit more upgradable and something that could last as long as the desk phones have been. As we turn to the budget, there are four things that I, or four line items I just want to draw attention to. Training and travel, there is a big increase, mostly because of that ITIL training that multiple members are taking, as well as a cybersecurity conference that's in San Francisco every springtime. Internet access went up just a little tiny bit with the new transition to the new fiber agreement. That was, again, our second internet exit point, managed services, and a few extra things that went along with that new internet. The small equipment saw a modest bump because about a third of all of the wireless access points that were used throughout the city have reached end of life or will reach end of life. When that happens, they don't receive any security updates. They will still run. So what we have decided to do is to concentrate on our high-profile areas, the ones that we want to make sure receive those updates, and that is this building, the Justice Center, and Renard. The others, we're gonna be pushing off until two thousand twenty-seven. And then, computer equipment, we, because two thousand twenty-seven has a fairly high number of computers that are scheduled for replacement, we took a fair chunk of those and moved them forward to next year to kind of even things out. But as more things move towards the cloud, every browser out there loves using memory. So a few years ago, eight gigabytes was considered normal. Sixteen was a luxury. Sixteen gigabytes, it uses eighty-five percent just by you opening up an internet browser sometimes. So we're gonna be increasing as a standard to thirty-two gigabytes of memory, as well as additional storage. That will not only keep everyone running as well as they should do now, but depending on how our finances look in the future, it also kind of future-proofs us instead of having to buy additional components sooner than the refresh. And those are all the things I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
All right, good evening. We are here with Kevin Kreis, our Communications Manager, and we're gonna start off with some of our accomplishments and highlights for the past year. So last year, we reported that we installed, our parks installed, and we operated a brand-new LED board right there at Main and Seventy. This past year, in twenty-five, a new one is installed at Sports Park, right there on Highway K. We operate that, and the intent through strategic planning was to potentially add another one here in the city come of two thousand twenty-six. Just yesterday morning, we launched O'Fallon On Air, O'Fallon's first podcast. So if you haven't seen it on Facebook, on YouTube, Spotify, iTunes, we are out there for the first time on podcast. Hopefully, every two weeks, you'll subscribe and listen to a new podcast produced all in-house. Additionally, a couple of months ago, we reported to you, O'Fallon TV went streaming. We are now streaming on Apple TV and Roku, so all O'Fallon TV videos, meetings can be picked up live on any kind of streaming device, phone, iPad, and such. YouTube, we've had a YouTube channel for years now, but starting January one, all of our O'Fallon TV meetings, all civic meetings like this one tonight, are also posted on YouTube. So it's on-demand and on YouTube. And with that, let me give you a couple of numbers here. Since then, we've had a fifteen percent increase in our YouTube channel, and a thirteen percent increase in subscribers for our YouTube. That equates to over fifty-five thousand views and a hundred and fifty new subscribers since January, meaning more of our residents are getting more of what we should be doing, which is transparent government communications. With more statistics, for Facebook, for marketing that way, we, this year, we had, we are up to ninety-three thousand page visits, which is up thirty-five percent. Last year, we reported fifty-two percent. So every year, we continue to grow on that market as well. So last, as far as an accomplishment here, is the newsletter rebrand. So as you know, beginning in January, we rebranded the O'Fallon Update Newsletter and Rec Guide to what is now called O'Fallon Life Magazine, which includes the Rec Guide. So we've had three issues now put out this year, and a fourth one is in production, and we are actively today reviewing different cover ideas for what that one will feature. So that gets mailed to more, about forty-nine thousand mailboxes four times a year. So it's a significant publication that the city puts out. And along with that, we rebranded our weekly e-newsletter that comes out every Friday morning at eleven AM to O'Fallon Life Weekly. So as you notice, we've gone through an entire rebrand for the city. Everything is O'Fallon Life. O'Fallon Life, O'Fallon Life streaming, on-air, and such. So that's what we're doing right now in Communications. And on top of that, we've also, everybody else has mentioned, all their drone successes. We've added two drone pilots this year as well, so you'll see us flying around, maybe not quite as much as the Police Department does, but we're out there as well. Some exciting challenges that we're coming up to here, actually in the next couple of weeks, and we reported an exciting challenge and accomplishment last year, which was the renovation of this room we're sitting in with all the audio upgrades to the room. We are beginning next Friday morning, following next Thursday's council meeting, the complete overhaul of the room that is right behind you in our control room to finish that capital improvement, and this time it will be for all the video upgrades. So on your screen to your left, you see the current configuration back there, that top-left photo. That's what it looks like back there. It's a tube TVs inside old metal racks with old equipment, and below that is what the room looks like, our staff photo next to it working. And then to the far right, the top-right photo is a mock-up of what the new system will look like. So new servers, new technology, things such as that will be put in there. This equipment that you see on the left photos was installed in the nineteen nineties when this building was opened. So with this investment that you guys have approved last year, we hope to see this for the next twenty-plus years as well, to put us into the future. So that is that there. Just looking quickly at the budget right now, you'll notice, if you go through it, that depending on the line item, you'll see some reductions where we can, and any type of increase is fairly small. And typically, those increases are due to just contractual increases every year with what services we provide, particularly in the technology systems line. We do, it's our contractual increase for our website hosting. We manage the reverse nine-one-one system for the entire city, so those things just continue to go up. Nothing really new in there. It's just price increases, as everybody else has seen as well. Production equipment, you'll see an increase there. That is to fulfill, or start to fulfill, a strategic planning item which would allow our O'Fallon TV to go remote and go live outside of just this room. So with that there, that'd get us about halfway there. Due to budget constraints, the intent is to get the equipment we need to go live this coming year, and then hopefully the following year, without budget constraints, get the rest of what we need to fulfill the full strategic planning item. So if there are no questions with that, we can move on to CDBG.
That was very nice leading on. Councilmember Ragstale.
Thank you. What is Project Home? I noticed that it increased by, or a decrease of eighty percent.
Yeah, so Project Home is, actually, Melissa will talk about that in the grants. It's managed out of Grants and Assistance Division. That is our self-funded program we have here at the city to provide some home improvements for low-to-moderate-income residents. That money lives, because that's part of the Communications Department, lives within this budget. It's typically always funded at twenty thousand dollars. However, last year, we had a surplus of funds, and with council approval, we were able to provide some one-time grants. So finance floated in there, a hundred thousand to cover that. However, we did not spend a hundred thousand, so that was just reduced back down to twenty thousand.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thanks, Tony. Community Development Block Grant Fund, CDBG.
All right, so next, we'll get into Grants and Assistance, and I will let Melissa Hoffman here take over, because she has the expert in that field. She'll go through all of our different programs, what we were able to do in two thousand twenty-five, and what we project and hope to do in two thousand twenty-six. But before I do, you will see one change in our budget that comes to staffing. We're not adding staff. We actually have approved currently two full-time staff within Grants and Assistance, and several months ago, we went down to one. The staff member left and went to a different department within the city, so left Melissa by herself. And with the unknown right now of the federal budget, we are going to move that second position from a full-time to a part-time. With the uncertainty right now, there is no approved budget for two thousand twenty-six from HUD, so this makes it a little more fiscally responsible to move it down to a part-time for now. So with that, I'll turn it over to Melissa.
There we go. Hi, thank you so much for having me here, and thank you for your time. I will try to make this as quick as possible. So these are some of our accomplishments that we have done so far. So you can see with our three home repairs, we've assisted about twenty-nine different households. We have two of our programs, the exterior and the mobile home repair programs, that have both expended their funding so far for this year. We do have some limited funding available still for our interior home repair program. Our O'Fallon Transportation Program has been quite busy. You can see there that we have a total of a hundred and nine registered riders. And riders for eligibility, they have to be at least sixty-two years of age, or legally disabled, or low to moderate income. So those are the eligibility requirements. And we have completed seven hundred and seventy-five one-way trips for necessary medical appointments within St. Charles County. Our emergency homeless prevention, we have assisted thirteen households that are at risk of losing homes with up to fifteen hundred dollars for rent, mortgage, or utility payments. So non-CDBG, we also have home funding that is federally funded through the St. Louis County Home Consortium. They hold those funds there. They hold those funds there. We administer our down payment assistance program. So, so far, we've had three households assisted this year, which is more than the previous year, so that's awesome. We also, in a better way to use those funds and spend those funds, we started offering the Affordable Rental Program, and those funds were awarded to the care service to purchase and rehabilitate three properties in O'Fallon. They'll also provide case management for long-term housing success. We are also, in fiscal year 2025, going to be using those funds for radon mitigation, for testing and mitigating, if possible, or if needed, rather, with the homes for the CDBG Home Repair Program. That is an environmental requirement now that we do with all of the homes that go through that program. They do have to be tested for radon. And then, also, the Home ARP Funds, that is also through St. Louis County Home Consortium. We issued a joint Notice of Funding Opportunity with the St. Charles Urban County, and those funds were awarded to the care service for six properties for affordable rental housing for that program. And then, lastly, we have our Project Home. So, this is 100% funded by our Project Home Golf Tournament. So, we just completed that on September 19th, so I just wanted to say really quickly a thank you to our sponsors, our golfers, our staff and event staff that came out that day to support that. I'm still working on the final numbers, but we did have another successful year. I think everybody had a great time that came out. We also use those funds for emergency home repairs, or if we get referrals from code enforcement for residents that need assistance, we can utilize those funds for that. So, so far this year, we've had two households that we've helped with that. And then, as Tony mentioned earlier, we did open up a nonprofit organization grant program, and two organizations were selected as recipients for those fundings, and that is Restore St. Charles and the Delta Center for Independent Living. And so, they are going to carry out their program-specific items with the funding for that. Do you have any questions about any of the programs so far this year?
Questions or comments? All right.
Okay.
Good to go.
So, I will move quickly just into our allocation for federal fiscal year 2025. So, we are still operating on federal fiscal year 2024 funds. So, we have not yet received our 2025 funds. We are going to be receiving those and expending those next year in 2026. We did have a slight decrease due to new entitlements becoming eligible to receive program funds. So, we're down about a little over $11,000, so it's not bad. It's very manageable. And we'll continue to offer the same programs as carried out in our consolidated plan, and then our subsequent annual plans for each year.
Excellent.
Any questions about?
Questions or comments? I have one quick comment.
Yes.
I love the CDBG program. I think it's, I think it's awesome that the city has that available for, for people in need. I knew a woman over 20 years ago, I guess, who was distraught because code, someone called code enforcement, and her, she had green on the side of her house, and she was handicapped. So, she's like, "Well, I can't get out there and wash it myself." So, these types of programs are what help people like that, who are in need of, of that type of help, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Some of administration's accomplishments for this year are that we shepherded the new 2025 to 2029 strategic plan through to adoption by residents. The construction of the Center for Advanced Skills Training in Law Enforcement is well underway. You've heard about that a couple of times tonight. Firing range is complete and fully operational. The EVOC track's under construction. Everything else is well into the planning phases. We are on target to issue our bonds for expense repayment prior to the end of the year. Additional strategic downtown parcels have been acquired, and Main Street renovations are ongoing. We successfully expanded the municipal showcase event in Jefferson City, and I'm proud to say that it's going to expand again next year with more cities being involved. We assisted with the compensation study completion and the proposed adoption in your budget. A couple more, we continue to support all of our departments in their endeavors. The turfing of the fields at Ozzy are of special importance to us, and we continue working on long-term projects to bring additional retail and other attractions to the city. Those weren't on your slide. I just added that. Some of our goals for next year, continue the downtown redevelopment efforts, complete the key economic development initiatives, including at the Streets of Caledonia and the Bryan Road and I-70 corridor that you've heard about tonight, secure additional interest and usage agreements for both Castle and the Real-Time Information Center, work with all the departments to ensure the ongoing strategic plan implementation occurs, and continue to support all the functions of the city through our budget oversight. I won't go through the city clerks. Let me go backwards for that one. I'll get to that in a second. In our budget, the total requested is largely flat from last year. All of the general fund departments were asked to cut over 3% from, or 3% from their operating portion of the budget. Administration did that as well. This was accomplished by decreasing some travel and training expenses by closely reviewing what conferences were actually attended versus what was budgeted for, as well as lowering the emergency contingency line item by $5,000. In addition, we lowered advertising, printing, and telephone costs to better reflect actual spending trends. And lastly, I'd like to note that office equipment has $0 requested for 2026. There is an increase of $2,500 in the team O'Fallon line as we see costs continue to rise, and we plan to provide additional citywide training for supervisors from that line item in 2026. Moving to legal, if you have no questions about that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Any comments? Councilmember Ragsdale has a question.
Why the decrease in the election costs?
So, the election authority tells us what they anticipate the cost to be every year, and we just plug in the numbers that they give us.
Any other questions? All right, please continue.
Thank you. Moving to legal fees, regarding that, there's a $5,610 increase among all of the line items. The prosecuting attorney is decreasing by 1,000, and the personnel attorney line is staying the same as in 2025. You might note that the 2025 year-to-date for miscellaneous legal expenses is $994,928. Since this budget was prepared, the actual 2025 year-to-date is $1,622.50, because we had a reimbursement from an insurance company for the rest of that amount. As you can see, looking year-to-year, the miscellaneous legal fee line is a line that fluctuates due to legal expenses that are not able to be budgeted for each year. So, we're asking for the same $75,000 as every year, but we have no idea what it will actually cost. I would be more than happy to entertain any questions about legal fees.
Questions or comments? Okay.
I will look to best. Do you want to do the city clerk's part, or do you want me to?
I can do it quickly. So, the clerk's office really enjoys processing paperwork. I think next year's goal, I'm going to count how much legislation, pieces of paper we print, so I can bring that next year to you guys as an accomplishment. So, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes on. We have processed over 300 public records requests and 800 in a year, because the police department has their own, the court department, building does plot plans, and then admin does general requests. So, it's a lot of information to provide to the public. Also, long-term goal of preserving records, we have purchased additional filing cabinets, so we should be good with our permanent record storage in the basement. Also, we support staff with Agenda Quick and provide software as needed and support that way. Continue to update ordinances and resolution templates for staff, so at least there's a unified look with all of our legislation. Staff has appreciated that. Also, creating minute templates for all the board and commission recording secretaries over the years. The templates have got a date, so I've been able to do that yearly for them. Continue preserving our records. There's just a lot of paperwork. So, any questions?
Questions or comments? Guess not.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Snowden, anything else?
I will have some closing remarks, if you don't mind, after Mrs. Boshert finishes her part.
Not at all. Ms. Boshert, take it away.
For, for Finance Department, our accomplishments this year has been, we have implemented the new ERP system for utility billing, which also includes resident access to allow residents to go online and manage their account, and they can also now pay by e-check if they would like to, which was new. We've implemented Tyler Payments, which is the merchant services for credit cards. That's integrated with our ERP system. Implemented general billing, which provides a means for the city to create bills electronically and an opportunity for those people to pay online versus sending mail-in payments. I do know that our retirees that pay Cobra really love this. They've been asking for this for quite a while. We entered into an agreement with UKG Ready, which will replace our new timekeeping system. Our timekeeping system that we have now is currently end-of-life, so we hope to have that completed sometime mid-next year. And we've also entered into an agreement recently with Tyler Technologies, which is our ERP system for Pattern Stream. And Pattern Stream is a system that's able to create electronic budget documents. Eventually, I would love for it to do this budget binder here, but our, our goal with this is to actually create the budget document that we send out to the public. But it can actually, it can do a lot of other pamphlets and flyers and things like that. So, so we're hoping that we are able to do quite a few of our documents, even potentially the CIP program with this system. And then, our goals for next year is to go live with our UKG Ready timekeeping system. We're currently underway with that, and the system that we're implementing now is also going to integrate with the new HRIS system that Human Resources is implementing. We want to go live with online bids in Munis. We currently do that. Our project managers use the system that they're able to do this. The online bids in Munis would allow us to do it for all of our bids, not just the project management bids. We don't plan on taking over the project management bids in this system. It's, they're, they're a whole nother program with all of the data that they input. And then, we want to go live with Pattern Stream. We want to start implementing that next year. Our hope is, is to take the budget document that we complete in February and try to redo that and implement the system with revising our, our February document. So, that way, in 2027, when we go to do that budget document, it's already in place. We've already tested it, and we're ready to go. That's going to save a lot of staff time. It's going to be able to allow us to get a lot more budget information more timely, too. Okay, and then, going to the Finance Department budget, there's only a couple of things that I'd like to highlight. I want to highlight the charges for contract services. That's going up about 13%. What that is, is that's, a lot of it's our banking fees that just continues to go up year over year. We also have fees that are going up for our retirement plan advisory services, and that is in correlation with the participation that we've been getting from our employees as well. So, that's a good thing, because our employees are really taking advantage of that benefit and using it. I'd also like to highlight the professional fees. It looks like it's going down 50%. That's not the case. The 2025 budget for 113,000, 54,000 of that is for the cost of our audit for 2024. We will create a purchase order with the rest of that money, and that will carry over into next year's budget. So, that's kind of the way that that works. So, the 2026 money that we have budgeted, that will carry over into the following year. So, so we're actually budgeting about the same amount every year, even though that looks like that's a huge decrease. Our technology systems, that is a decrease of about 26%. The purpose of that is now that we've been implementing the new ERP software, we're able to discontinue the maintenance for our previous software for utility billing. That also had cash sharing in there. It had content management, which is a system that saves our documents and files. So, we're able to cancel that. Plus, as we've implemented, there's other software modules and stuff we've been able to take off of the maintenance of that software. So, that's a really nice savings. And if you have any other questions about finance?
Questions or comments? Okay, moving on to debt service.
And then, debt service. What debt service is? Debt service is a fund where we manage the debt payments for projects that we have taken to our voters, and they have approved through a ballot issue. So, the revenues that are coming in are property tax revenues that we set and levy every year in order to create enough money that we can make our debt service payments. And then, typically, our reserve balances are equal to the current year debt service payments plus the next year debt service payments. That's just to make sure that there's enough cash available at the time that you make those debt service payments.
That's pretty smart.
And that's.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions about debt service? All right, Mr. Snowden, you had some final closing comments?
Thank you, sir. As you've heard tonight, there have been some amazing accomplishments in 2025 across all departments. I'm sure that our citizens have no idea what happens here on a daily basis. I'd like to thank all of you for your time tonight in considering this budget. I'd also like to thank all of the departments for their work on this budget during a difficult budget year. And as always, thanks to our finance gurus to my left. I am so proud to serve with the individual subject matter experts, who I think you'll agree, make our city a great place for all of us. And so, again, thank you for your time tonight on behalf of all of your staff.
All right, I have a couple of closing comments myself, if that's all right. Every year, we come and we do this budget meeting, and every year, I know, I can see the work that staff has put into it, and I can tell you that I'm very grateful for that as well, and I think I speak for the whole council when I say that. It's very well organized, it's easy to understand. I, I agree with the statement you made at the opening, Mr. Snowden, that the great city of, of O'Fallon, Missouri is great, in part, because we have great staff here who really care about this city and really put in the extra effort, and I just want to say thank you to all of you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other, anything else? If there's nothing else, then we'll conclude this meeting at 9:52.